Council will call the meeting order for the record. It is August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at four thirty-two P. M. We'll begin this afternoon work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Burton.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move adoption of the agenda as published.
I have a motion of second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. You guys have it, and the agenda is adopted. First up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move approval of the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
I have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. You guys have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we will move into department commission reports. First item up is item ten, which is Public Works Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-three Republic Services Rate Review. I say I have the name Clint Dolezby, but well, we'll modify.
Name is Braden Norris, Finance Manager for Republic Services, address one 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 zero one West Executive Drive, Boise.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll try to keep this relatively brief and to the point. I know this isn't the first time you guys have done this, but just want to start off saying good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. So the present, the purpose of our presentation today is to present the proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three rates for solid waste that have already been vetted by MUBS, Finance, and the Solid Waste Advisory Commission. So annually, the solid waste collection rates are adjusted in accordance with section twenty-one of our contract with the City of Meridian with an effective date of October first. So to summarize the changes, I'll highlight the main drivers for the year, and then just share the majority, share the impact to the majority of the residential customers, which would be the ninety-five gallon cart holders, because those are the majority of the residential homeowners. So moving to the next slide. There we go. Okay, so to summarize the changes, I'll highlight the main drivers and then just and then any questions at the end, feel free to ask away. So first off is CPI. So this year it was a five point four four percent, but per the contract, we use we have a ceiling of ninety percent, which gets us to that four point eight nine eight. The next item is household hazardous waste. So overall, no impact to the customer. Essentially, Republic Services proposes to waive the one cent difference and bear the six thousand dollar burden that we reconciled. So no changes to the residents there. The third item is disposal, so no changes there. And then just to call out, there are no new additional rates or services being brought to the the council this year. And then the fifth item is the the VTEC, and just to kind of call this out here. So the federal government once again awarded the alternative fuel tax credit for compressed natural gas as an alternative fuel source. This tax credit is shared with the Meridian, with Meridian City, which the mayor and council have chosen to pass on to residents as a as a credit to the monthly rate. So the credit for the for the contract was fifty-two thousand and thirty-one dollars, and this amount is reflected in the residential rate sheet as a credit of eleven cents for all residential customers. And then this leads to the last two items, so I think these are the two big ones, but just to summarize here, from a recycling processing charge. So based on our contract with our partner, Western Recycling, the recycling processing fee has increased seven and a half percent year over year over our contract due to several factors such as labor increases, fuel, and cost of goods sold, i.e. steel to bill and ship out the recycling goods. And just for general context here, last year, we did not do an increase on the processing fee. And the average increase over the life of the contract has been about four and a half percent. And this year, we Republic received a thirteen point one percent. And then just, we did a review of all the recycling centers in the Northwest, and ours is the third lowest in comparison. So we're in a good spot when comparing to other sites. And then just the last item here. So this was brought up last year. So we're, what we're requesting here is approval to make last year or the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two add a cycle adjustment permanent. This was put in place for just one year for us to reevaluate this year, and this is currently in our run rate. So we're not going to adjust anyone's rates. Going forward, this will just be a part of normal CPI methodology. And then just from an overall perspective, taking a step back for the residential impact, like I mentioned, for the ninety-five gallon cart customers, the net price increase year over year would be ninety-four cents. So with that, I've said a lot of words. I'll stop there. Any questions or comments?
Counsel, any questions at this point?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
Sorry, Ralph, how about this? Can you provide some clarity with regard to the, to making the adjustment permanent?
Mm-hmm. So overall, we stand by the labor adjustment that we did last year. So we're not going to roll back our wages. We think we got this right, because we've been doing better with our turnover. We're getting the trash off the ground. And just to kind of call out, so last year, when we passed this on, we we actually only passed on fifty percent of the actual increase to our customers. And with the, with that market adjustment, we just feel like we're at a better spot now. And, you know, just for general context too, right, for CPI in general, for the month of July, all items, it was nine point one. And for the month of June, it was eight point five. So just given kind of where we're at with the market, we feel like it it just makes sense for our drivers, so that way we're helping the customers for Meridian.
Counsel, any additional questions at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Yeah, just a comment. You know, I appreciated that we took a look at that temporarily, hoping that the inflation would pass. Unfortunately, it did not. You know, it feels like this sets your base to a good place where you're keeping up with inflation under the contract. I guess I more had just a question about the commercial customers in the schedule that you provided on the rate sheet, which was just in general, are those going up in a uniform way? I was taking a look at a couple of them. It didn't look like anything was totally out of the norm, but could you just give us a general overview of the rate increases for the commercial and industrial?
Yeah, so just to kind of call out there. So what we did was just apply that CPI methodology of that four point eight nine eight percent, and we just kept it simple that way and just applied that.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
I see no additional questions at this time, so but you continue with your presentation or wrap up, whichever you'd like.
Yep, I'll wrap up. So just want to say we appreciate your guys' partnership, and we really enjoy working with you. Your staff and city is, makes the job fun. So appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the Republic Services team for being here, and our Public Works team, who's partners with Republic Services team as well. All right, so with that, we'll move on to item eleven, which is our Park and Recreation Department Maps, Meridian Art in Public Spaces Ordinance Updates. And turn this over to Cassandra, who is more than ready to present to council today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmen and women. So the, why I'm co-presenting this with this is the Vice Chair of the Meridian Arts Commissioner, Jessica Peters. And she was the Chair of the Public Art Subcommittee for quite a while, has been heavily invested in the arts in Meridian.
Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, thank you so much for for having us today. So as you may know, our Meridian Art in Public Spaces Ordinance was adopted by the Meridian City Council in April of two thousand and fifteen. And this ordinance established the Meridian Art in Public Spaces Program, through which City Council provides funding in the amount of fifty cents per Meridian resident, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars per year. And this is to establish art in public spaces throughout the City of Meridian. And since two thousand and fifteen, since the ordinance was passed, we have installed eighty-five pieces throughout the city. And we currently have another fifteen projects in the works. So we've made a lot of progress over the past number of years. So in two thousand and fifteen, the population of Meridian was about ninety-one thousand three hundred people. And in two thousand and twenty-two, the population was estimated at one hundred thirty-three thousand four hundred, which is about a forty-six percent increase. I don't have to tell you, you know, we've had a lot of growth in the city over the past seven years. And as the population has grown, we've also seen an increased interest in public art, not just in Meridian, but throughout the Treasure Valley, really. And at this point, the Meridian Arts Commission feels that more funding is necessary to support public arts budget, which will attract a wider interest in artists and in in the project ideas that that we receive. So Meridian Arts Commission is proposing to amend the MAPS ordinance to remove the fifty thousand dollar cap on funding. And this will allow funding levels to be commensurate with the population levels in Meridian, and also to grow as the city continues to grow. So thank you so much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Just got counsel. Any questions? Or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
You know I'm going to comment on this one. I'm so proud of you both in this growing arts community in Meridian. I think this is the right time to follow through with what you're recommending. Thought of another way, it's almost as if there's a, you could think of it as a level of service. Our community's grown so much in population and geographically that that in order to provide these opportunities for the arts to our community, it's spread out amongst more folks and amongst 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 bigger cities. So by removing this cap, it in some ways allows us perhaps merely to maintain some level of opportunities that we've been doing. Just dispersed amongst the bigger communities. So we've received great feedback from the business community and from our citizens that appreciate having this as a component of our city. I've heard a lot of good feedback, and our Arts Commission does phenomenal work with very limited resources. So this is it's a relatively small financial figure, but I think it's a a strong commitment and message to the arts community that it's an important part of who Meridian is. So I appreciate the commission bringing this forward. I'm fully in support.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, Councilman Borton used a word that I think aptly sums it up, and that's to maintain. We are growing rapidly. We're expanding. We've got more parks coming on, expanding parks, doing different things. So this really is a maintenance budget for for the Arts Commission. So I think it's needed and certainly supported.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm supportive of this as well. I think it's an important part of our development as a city as well, and supporting our economic development. It's a modest amount. I appreciate maintaining that, but having it reflect the changing city and how much bigger we are. So I think it makes sense. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel, any further questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much for that item. And with that, we will move on to item twelve, which is the Parks and Recreation Department Public Art Update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I had actually meant to give this before the MAPS ordinance, but I just wanted to give you an update on many of the projects that we have been working on recently and are underway. So many of you probably know about the Traffic Box Series. It's probably one of the most popular programs. These are a few that were installed last year, and we have ten wraps ready for installation this year. Here are the ones that were selected for, from the repository, five pieces. And here are the pieces from the West Ada School District Youth, three of which are sponsored by MDC. They would be happy to sponsor more, but they have to be within their urban renewal area. So there were only three, three that remain unwrapped or need to be updated. We also have several murals underway. This is one, hopefully you've seen this one as you drive by Meridian Cycles. It's a great piece that was installed last year. This is the one, and this is an agenda item, because the, it's for an easement with the library, but hopefully you will approve. This is for the Unbound Library. It was great working with the library on this. As you can see, there's kind of a a gal on the right working on an iPad and a robot on the left reading a book, and you can kind of see the flipping motion through it. So it's a great way to sort of think about that sort of library and their technology aspect. And this is planned for installation, assuming approval during Art Week, which is next month, September seventh through ninth. This one is for, is planned for the Meridian Pool, so working with the West Ada Recreation District to put this on the east-facing wall of the pool, which is a highly visible area across from Story Park. Another mural project, which I've been really excited about, the Skate Park and at Tully Skate Park, that had a mural project that was instigated by an arts commissioner and a school. It was an alternative school, a youth project, but as you can see, it's a little bit older and maybe needs an update. So this project is partnering a professional artist, Miguel Almeida, who happens to also have skated at Tully Skate Park in his youth with a youth apprentice. So we had a call to artists and had a youth apprentice apply. And they have submitted, they submitted three designs, and the design review panel selected one of those designs to work with, and these are the ones ready for installation. The the one on the right is by Miguel, the professional artist, and then the one on the left is the youth apprentice, Macy Ratzteberger. And she's a senior student at the Idaho Fine Arts Academy and does amazing work for a high school student. We have some sculptural projects underway at the Five Mile Creek Pathway Trail Hub, and this is the site that's the city's first gateway to the Five Mile Pathway and one of the priority pedestrian routes. We put out a call to artists for an RFP with an increased budget to fifty thousand. And this was a national call to artists, and we had thirty-two people apply, which is the most that Meridian has ever seen. We had national and international artists apply to that. And four artists are currently under contract to develop proposals for this. So the the next couple of slides, I'm just going to show you some of the work by those artists. So these are not being proposed for this site. This is just their previous work, so you have to use your imagination to think what they might propose. Andrew Kovacs from California does these very colorful installations, has done a lot of pieces in desert, so you can see the cactuses and very colorful. Miguel McLaughlin, his, these are bronze pieces, and I was surprised by some of his price points, because I don't know if you know, but bronze has increased exponentially in price. I used to be an art appraiser before this position, and it's, so he he will have something proposed, and hopefully it's on the scale that these ones are. Eileen Gaze from Nevada, these are, you might not be able to tell from the images, but these are mosaics, also really impressive work. And Steve Parker from Texas, these are, have some musical instruments. That middle piece is actually up in Ketchum, if you've ever been in Ketchum and recognized that one. So these artists will all be sending in proposals in September, and the design review panel will select a piece. So we'll have something really interesting at the Trail Hub. So what's next? The Public Art Committee has identified Discovery Park Phase Two as the next site of a big public art project. And this has kind of been in the plans for a while with a bigger budget of a hundred and fifty thousand. This call will ask artists to create sort of an interactive or educationally focused project, following the theme of discovery for Discovery Park. And the artists will be asked to create either a larger, more site-integrated work, or two to three standalone pieces that relate to each other. Thank you. Thank you so much for allowing me to let you know about our really great projects in Meridian and stand for any questions.
Thank you, Cassandra Council. Any questions? Just good job, thumbs up from in case you couldn't see the screen from a few, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, and one more. Item fourteen, Parks and Recreation Department Public Art Easement Agreement for seven twenty-two East Second Street.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, as you saw in the last presentation, the plans are underway for the Unbound Library, and hope that you approve the easement.
Counsel, any questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much for all the information you provided and all the work that you all are doing for the community and how you're defining our streets with with your time and energy. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, as the council, do you want the the MAPS ordinance on next week for your agenda approval?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, I think that'd be appropriate.
Okay.
To do that.
But the agreement you can approve tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Question from Mr. Mayor. We just need to make a motion on the public art easement agreement, and we can move that forward. So I would move that we agree to the Parks and Recreation Department's Public Art Easement Agreement at seven twenty-two East Second Street for the public art that will be displayed there.
Second.
I have a motion in two seconds to agree to the Public Art Easement Agreement. Is there a discussion? Ms. Andrew, we need a roll call. If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. You guys have it, and the agreement is agreed to. So thank you very much, and congratulations.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
For the record, Councilman Cavanagh had joined us during that conversation, so.
Nice catch. I saw his face, but I didn't remember to make the notation. So with that, we've reached the end of our agenda for the work session. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All those favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed nay. You guys have it. We are adjourned.
...
What did it work?
It is a pretty good word, yeah. You need that on Scrabble.
When was that at? Oh yeah, right?
Triple word score on that one. I guess we're talking about Ireland today. It's twenty six. Twenty-six.
Council called the meeting order for the record is August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two is six P M. We'll begin tonight's city council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Burton.
Here.
Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please stand and join us in the pledge. Next item up is the community invocation, which tonight will be delivered by Pastor Vinnie Hankey of Real Life Church. If you'd all take this as an opportunity to join us in this invocation or a moment of silence and reflection.
Members of City Council, thank you for the opportunity to be present with you and to pray for you. God, I thank you for the city of Meridian. I thank you for the opportunity to live here with my neighbors, and I ask that you would be present with the city councils as they perform their work this evening. You would help them to listen to the members of their city well as they speak, to consider the matters of business with wisdom and discernment and discretion, and that peace, patience, and kindness would rule the city. God, we ask that the things performed by the city council would be glorifying to you and good to others, and we ask this through the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. God bless you all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move adoption of the agenda as published.
Second.
Have a motion of second to adopt the agendas. They're in discussion. If not, all favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The highest have it, and the agenda is adopted. Mr. Cook, do we have anyone set up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay, then we will move on with our action items first. First item up is a public hearing for ordinance twenty-two dash nineteen eighty-eight. We will open, well, we will continue this public hearing with comments from Mr. Neri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Basically, I think to help clarify, there's been a little bit of misunderstanding in the public on this, on this ordinance and what the impact of it is. I did read the comments online, and many of the comments online clearly don't understand what, what's being proposed here. There's no, there's no intent by this ordinance to change the districts as already been determined by the districting committee. There is no change in the boundaries or any of that. All of that was done pursuant to Idaho code, and that's going to remain the way it is. All that's being proposed here is to change seat two to seat one and seat one to seat two. That's the label of those seats that within we represented the corresponding districts that go with those numbers, and those people that the, 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 the council members in those seats live in those districts, which was what the intent of the statute was originally. So all this getting accomplished by this proposed change is allowing every district in the twenty twenty-three election to elect a person within their district that lives within the b- boundaries of their district. So the three that are remaining till the twenty twenty-five election will all reside in their districts, and all the people up for election in twenty twenty-three will have to reside in those corresponding districts. So there is no change or intent to change the districts. It is merely the seat number of seat two and seat one, and then the election cycles will roll after that. So again, as I've stated previously, the intent of the legislature always was, once the city reaches a hundred thousand people, that every member of the city council be elected in districts. This will allow that process to take place sooner than later, and that the entire city will then be districted by the twenty twenty-three election. So hopefully that answers most people's questions, but most of the comments I saw and are, I responded to in the last few weeks all seem to think this is changing the district boundaries, and it is not.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Council, any questions for Mr. Neri?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I appreciate that explanation. I think the public might be understandably confused at times. The legislature didn't do any favors in, in dropping this on cities. I think one of the confusion pieces for me was just the reality that seat numbers that we've utilized over the last thirty, forty, fifty years have been completely arbitrary. They don't relate or correspond to anything. Right. And any of us, we file for a seat, and you pick a number, and we're all the same, representing the whole city. So there's no significance to being in seat four or two or one. So it's never mattered. The next election, it starts to matter. So that explanation that you provided seems to clear that up. Yes, that was the intent. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
So the ordinance that's on the agenda this evening mentions in the second whereas statement that Idaho code and Meridian city code, beginning with the twenty twenty-three general city election, I didn't see in the state code where it mentions a deadline for this to be implemented, so I wanted to get a Mr. Neri's thoughts on that.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Perot, you're, you're correct. The, the intent from the legislature that was communicated through the Pro Tem, Senator Winder, who was the one that brought this forward back in twenty twenty, was to do this as soon as possible, recognizing with staggered election terms and the way elections function, that it would be difficult, if not impossible, to do this in one election cycle very easily. So he recognized it by, he didn't put a, they didn't put a deadline for that purpose because they knew with staggered elections, that's problematic. This really accomplishes what was intended, which is in one election cycle, all six, all six districts will be represented by people within those districts. So we were actually accomplishing it sooner, but you're correct. There was not a specific deadline. It had to be done. It was a desire of the state to do it as soon as we could.
Thank you, counsel. Any other questions for Mr. Neri? Mr. Cook, do we have anybody sign up on this item?
Mr. Mayor, no one signed up in advance.
Okay. Well, if there's anybody here that would like to provide testimony on this item, if you'd like to come forward at this time and do so, be recognized for three minutes. So Chairman, thank you for joining us this evening.
Mayor, Council, thanks for the opportunity to come this evening.
You say your name and address for the record, of course.
I should know that. It's in the middle of the summer. It's August, and I'm wearing jackets. Joe Palmer, I reside at thirty-two thirty-nine North Dixon in Meridian, and I also have a business property in downtown Meridian also. Just a little bit of background on what we did with House Bill or thirteen, I believe, is what it was. It's hard to remember them over a couple of years. There was two members of the public that came to me at the beginning of the session, and it was right after the city elections had taken place, and they were both a little bit distraught with that, but they didn't feel like they were representative, and those both live in Boise, by the way. It's not Meridian. It was in Boise. And they came to me, and by the way, it was, you know, it was basically bipartisan. One of them was a Democrat and one was Republican, and they were working together. They seen a problem, and one of them knew me personally, and so they came out with me and said, would you be interested in carrying this piece of legislation? And I agreed. I said, yes, it's a great idea. I then went and talked to Senator Winder. He agreed also. There was a good piece of legislation. We moved forward. We knew from the beginning it was extremely clunky. Everything that we do in the legislature is always amendments, because you know how it works. Constantly, we're going to have to amend and fix and change as things move forward. As we tried to smooth out those bumps as much as possible, there were hundreds of ideas that came through. Each one of them made it look more and more like the legislature would be more cherry-mandering and trying to do things a certain way, and it's absolutely not what I wanted. I want a representative government, and I think what you have done with what you have been given has done very well. I knew it was going to be hard, even on the next year after. We've had two more sessions since then. People came and wanted to make changes. Each time, we thought, oh, those are great changes, but let's kind of hold back here and wait and see how it's handled. Right now, there's only the two cities that are having to deal with it. Boise's done it one way. I think you have been very creative in what you've done, and I think that's great. I think it's a good way of handling it, because you were handed a problem that was hard to deal with. I would surmise that in the future, we will probably make changes to this, though, you know, the redistricting committees or how that's going to be handled might come into legislation. The number might be lowered, you know, from a hundred thousand. There were people from the beginning that said this should go all the way down. Well, obviously, there's some of those small cities don't even have enough people to run for the positions that they have, so that wouldn't work. It started at twenty-five thousand, and then immediately there was some problems that we moved it up to a hundred. And so I think we have a good start, and I think the program that you've set aside is actually really well done for what you were handed. And I agree, what you were handed was not easy, but it was not easy to make it easier, and so we needed to all be able to work together and work through those problems, and I think you all have done a good job on that. I was down for any questions if you have any.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilmember.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for being here this evening. What, what, what came about with the number of a hundred thousand population? Was that just an arbitrary number? Was that just sort of a middle ground number?
Mr. Mayor, it's hard for me to say that the right words come out. It wasn't most of the states around, most cities of a hundred thousand are in districts. That was the one that we found that was the most. There was a number of twenty-five, and that's, that's a pretty high, you know, most, there's a lot of them that are twenty-five, too, but when it changed from twenty-five to a hundred, it brought in almost every city is that's over a hundred thousand has it, and so we just went with that level to start it out to see how it would work out. So somewhat arbitrary, but we, you know, gained as much information as we could across the country.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
Chairman, thank you for being here and, and agreeing to answer some of our questions. I really appreciate it. It's good to have you here.
Those are easy questions.
Can you share more with us about the feedback you were receiving from the public in regard to wanting to have individual representatives for the areas that they lived in? And I didn't hear anything from the constituents here in Meridian, as I've served as a volunteer, and when I was campaigning, I didn't hear concerns about Meridian specifically needing districts, but can you share in more detail what the concerns were? I'm not sure I trust the news reports I read about it. I'd love to hear it directly from you.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, very little of it was coming from Meridian. I mean, I hate to just pick on Boise all the time, but sometimes I kind of like to pick on Boise, obviously, so I'll go ahead. Most of the problems were all coming from Boise, and if you looked at Boise, their council were all in a very close relationship physically to each other, and so the west side of Boise, which is very different than the, you know, south inside and the north philosophically, we'll say, they felt very left out because they just can't ever get representation, and they can't get people to even come and talk to them. So that's where it was coming from, and these, the two people that came to us were, are involved in politics, and they're more so now. One of them had ran for city council and just felt like they, as they went through all the meetings that they would go to, when you're going through this process that we've all been through, you hear it from everybody, and that's where they came up with it. She did lose that race that she was in, but she just felt like she wasn't this, she wasn't being represented very well where she was at in hers, and also the other one that was Republican was, for obvious reasons, it comes to voice that same situation. So, and then more and more people started coming forward. Really, the only ones that really pushed back against it were elected officials at that point. Very few citizens came and testified against the bill. There was a few, but it was overwhelming the other side.
And if you wouldn't mind me adding on to that, I, I can say some of the work in the mayor's office for many years, one of the common questions we would get to the mayor's offices, who's my city council member? That didn't say that they were implying that they wanted a change in, in style. I think it's something that, as a lot of people move here from other parts of the country, that had district for the council members, they kind of assumed that there was someone who was their one person. So it, it has been a question, but it wasn't like, okay, well, let's change it per se through those interactions, but it was common for people in Meridian to ask that question. Council, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Thank you again for, for being here and coming out. I think it's fantastic. The more we could see our state representatives, the better. On any issue, guys, just to.
It's not what I always hear.
No, because seriously, it's awesome, and if, if we ever lob a bomb and say, we complain about something, come tell us, and we'll talk to, we just, this communication's awesome. So I appreciate it very much. I've never been, I haven't been a fan of it, and, and just because you're here, I'll give a little answer face to face, is it just implies that if I'm in a district that my focus is more narrow, and I'm too old school and been around, that I just can't accept that the city council role is representing the entire city and looking out for the city, and I'll always struggle with that, and I think that's probably some of the pushback you got. It's not your fault, but it's maybe a mentality. At least it's my mentality that put me in a district. It's, boy, it's hard not to make sure the entire city's taken care of at all times. So when you hear any remarks from me that this is frustrating to have dealt with, we'll make it work for sure, best for the citizens, but it's tough to turn that mindset off, so, which I know you can appreciate. You've been downtown Meridian. You understand that, so.
Absolutely. I, I understand where you're coming from. I feel kind of strange in my job. A lot of times, people from Meridian are coming to me, and they're like, wait a minute, you have this authority given to you as the chairman of the transportation to do all this. Why aren't you pushing more towards Meridian? Okay, well, I feel like, you know, I do represent Meridian, but as the chair, I have the whole state, and so I kind of have two hats there, and I have to walk that line, too, and I think that everyone can do the same thing.
Yeah.
I think you can walk the line, and you do represent the whole city, but I think it's easier to represent a smaller group of people at the city, too. I mean, they both have their benefits, and I don't have the perfect system, but hopefully we're getting, hopefully we're always doing better.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Yeah. Chairman, sorry, I apologize. I'm coming to you from Denver, Colorado tonight. Because you've been so gracious with your time, I won't ask any questions about the Lunda Road overpass. I just wanted to say thanks for, for coming to chat with us tonight and sharing some historical perspective. To counsel Member Borton's point, your constituents are our constituents, and we're all just trying to serve the same taxpayer, and appreciate you just taking a little bit of time out of your personal time to come chat with us this evening.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else present that'd like to provide testimony on this item, either online or in the audience? If you're online, please use the raise your hand feature, or if you're here, go ahead and come forward at this time. And council, seeing no one else wishing to come forward and provide testimony on this item, I, you know, before we close the, the, the public hearing, I just want to reiterate my appreciation for your consideration of this request that I made. I did feel like this was the best way for the city to align the last election, as well as make it clear that who will be elected in, in twenty twenty-three, and I feel like that at the end of the twenty twenty-three election, we will have six council members representing six districts, all who've been duly elected and none who have been duly appointed at that point in time, and I think that's the most preferred way to accomplish the outcome for the residents. So thank you for entertaining this conversation and the dialogue, and I look forward to hopefully positive actions by you all on the ordinance section later when it's considered.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
That point, before I close the public hearing, we do have an agenda tonight, and I know there's one issue that may take quite a bit of time, and we've done this before. We could, after we close the public hearing, take up item number five. And we've done this before. We could, after we close the public hearing, take up item number five. I think the legal is, is in agreement with that and, and vote on that. That way the issue is done and people can move about instead of, uh, either staying here or being online all, all night. Who knows when it gets, gets over? So if, if that's, uh, okay with everybody, I would, I would, uh, move that we close the public hearing on ordinance twenty-two dash nineteen eighty-eight.
I have a motion second to close the public hearing on orders twenty-two and nineteen eighty-eight. Is there discussion? If not, in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose name. Guys have it and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment on this. I, I appreciate the citizens committee doing the work that they.
We are moving on to item five.
Item five, yes.
Which is ordinance twenty-two dash nineteen eighty-eight. I'd like the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance amending Meridian City Code, Section one seven one C concerning city council seats. Amending Meridian City Code, Section one seven one E concerning staggered terms. Amending Meridian City Code, Section one seven eleven B concerning duties and powers of the Meridian District Committee. Adding Meridian City Code, Section one seven eleven I concerning modifications to city council seat numbers. Avoiding conflicting ordinances and resolutions and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Counsel, we've heard this sentence written by title. Is there anybody who'd like a write-in since entirety? With that, do I have a motion for the discussion afterwards, or do we want discussion prior to a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Discussion prior to a motion would be great.
Okay. Is there anybody that likes to be recognized for discussion prior to a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the committee that worked on this. Um, uh, we asked them to, to draw the lines without, uh, knowing where, where we lived and, and do it in that, in that manner. And that's the right way to do it. Um, you know, if, if we wanted to gerrymand, uh, I had constituents in my neighborhood who, who would, would object to the lines because, uh, my parents live in the same subdivision that I do, and they drew the line on the collector road. They live on the other side of the street. You know, so, but, but they did, they get a good job. It's about the math. It's about where we serve. Um, uh, and, and making it equal and, and meeting the law and that what's required. I read all the comments that came in, the emails and as, 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 as our attorney has, has noted, then there was some misunderstanding what we're trying to do. Uh, it wasn't removing the lines or changing the lines. It was just trying to implement this as quickly as possible in the twenty twenty-three election and not waiting to twenty twenty-five. And, uh, uh, this was the way to do it. Um, if we had to do it over again, I think we would, but this is our only opportunity that we've done this. Um, maybe after they drew the lines, then look at it and say, okay, then add, put the numbers where it makes the most sense. Because this kind of made it a little, little awkward where someone in a, a living, not living in their district, in the district, but they would represent that district even though they lived in a different district. And I, I think to me, good government is not causing confusion amongst its, among its citizens. And that was just kind of a unusual situation that we're just trying to rectify here, nothing else. Everyone who was up in twenty twenty-three, they have to stand before the voters, is up to the voters. It doesn't change that. Same in twenty twenty-five, we're going to go about city business just, uh, the normal way. So I just think it's a, a, a good thing to do. It creates certainty in the process and it's done the right way. And like I said, I appreciate the citizens who were served on that commission and, and doing that work.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thanks. I, maybe just to add on, on council member Hovland's comments. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I want to commend you. Um, I think the process that you laid out for this was incredibly transparent and communicated directly to our citizens for your intent. Um, you know, I think we all saw a lot of email from some individuals who were misinformed about what the intent was of this. And I know, Mr. Mayor, you took some, some heat from some of those citizens thinking that and we weren't taking action at a certain time, that, that they had been led to believe that we were taking action. And this was all done because we wanted to communicate this to the public. Um, council, you know, we could have, uh, waived some of the readings and expedited a decision. And we were really intentional in hearing from the public, which I think is so much in line with the Meridian way. And I just want to thank you and commend you, Mayor, for leading of that from the outset on this, is that's how we wanted to handle things and give the public ample time to communicate about their feelings on this.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanagh. Council, any additional comments before a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
I want to echo some of the same comments that my fellow council member Hovland made. I just wanted to say thank you to the citizen-led committee that put this together. I think that they did the very best job that they ever could have. They were charged with a certain purpose, and I think that they went above and beyond and, and did a great job. And that's what we asked of them and, and as other committees that have came before them and other committees that will come after them. I think that they did the best possible job they could have done. Although, um, I, I was one of those elected officials from the beginning that wasn't a huge fan of this, of this law. I'm somewhat like, um, Councilman Borton. I, I look at the city of Meridian as a whole, and I feel like even as a city council member in these districts going forward, I have no doubt that um, we'll continue to make decisions that are in the best interest of the entire population of Meridian. Not necessarily those who are in our respective districts. Um, I hope that the repercussions, uh, that come, that will come from this are positive. And like anything in life, and you know, when we're given a lemon, we make lemonade. It's, that's our attitude and how we approach everything. So, um, with that said, for, for me, it was a matter of ju- just real simple, I guess, just which, which ordinance is better? You know, which, which ordinance is going to benefit the citizens of our community the best? And that's, that's honestly how I've looked at it, and I appreciate all of the citizen interaction. I appreciate all those who came and testified. Um, I appreciate all the letters and, and, uh, the outreach that, that has happened up until now. That's what Meridianites do. We get engaged, we care, we get involved. And, you know, sometimes we may not agree all of the time, but we agree most of the time. And but at the end of the day, what's most important is that you care. And, and that's, and I, and I thank you for that. Um, but looking at the two ordinances put together, I believe that, that, that the ordinance that has been proposed by the mayor is, um, it makes sense at the end of the day for, for our, our community. And it will, um, I think that it will accomplish the letter of the law, having every district in our city be represented in this next election cycle. And so for that purpose, simplistic as it is, is the reason why I'm in favor of this adopted resolution. Ordinance, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Shayer.
Thank you. Um, I had explained in a previous meeting, uh, but I'll explain again. Um, I'm going to abstain from voting for this ordinance. Um, I, I do think it makes good sense, but I feel that it is a direct conflict of interest for me. Um, it is specific to my seat and it is specific to the district that I represent. And I, I feel better about it personally, uh, by abstaining from voting for it. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Uh, this one has, has been a bit sobering for me. This is hands down probably the, one of the top three or four decisions I have, um, struggled with for the years that I have voted, um, for the city and have spent a lot of time really seriously considering what this means. Um, not just this, the potential, uh, switching of the order, of this, of the district numbers like we're discussing tonight, but just all of the district, districting. It could significantly change our city, really significantly change our city. Um, and I, that, that has, has had me, um, very thoughtful and, um, as a resident of our city, you know, concerned about what things look like. And I'm not saying it's going to change it for the, the worse, and that's not what I'm implying, but it could just really cause Meridian to look different. And, um, and so it's something that I've spent an enormous amount of time really mulling over. And in the end, um, initially I was not in favor of, of voting yes on this ordinance. I, I felt like we should leave it as the, um, district commission had, had decided it. But what it ultimately came down to for me was that it would leave a district unable to vote for an elected representative in twenty twenty-three. And that had me really concerned that we would leave any of the districts unable to, um, vote for their own representative. And so that's what it came down to, to me after, um, a lot of, a lot of significant wrestling within myself about the right way to go about this. And yet at the same time, ke- keeping our, um, goal as council to stay as, you know, as, as little involved in this process as we could. So I, I there's, there's many factors. I won't get into all of them tonight. Uh, if anybody has questions about how I came to that decision, I'd be happy to answer them. Um, but that's, that's where I landed with this, and I just have to say that um, there's a lot that's been said about our approach to this and our intentions with this. And, um, it's unfortunate that there's an assumption that's being made that this is, that we're going about this in a self-serving way. I wasn't aware of this ordinance until it was announced publicly by the mayor any sooner than any of you were. So I don't know how there's an assumption there's an opportunity for council to serve ourselves in that way. So I just wanted to get that out there because, um, I want our residents to know that we've really approached this in a way as that's as neutral and beneficial to our residents as, as we possibly can.
Thank you. Council, any other comments, or do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
I move that we, um, approve ordinance number two-two dash one nine eight eight and ordinance amending Meridian City Code one dash seven dash one C concerning city council seats, et cetera.
Second.
I have a motion of a second to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash nineteen eighty-eight. Is there discussion? If not, call the roll.
Straighter.
Abstain.
Burt.
Aye.
Pearl.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
No.
Borton.
Aye.
Hovland.
Aye.
For eyes one, no, one abstains, the ordinance is approved. So thank you all for your due diligence, uh, council. Uh, as was already mentioned with the districting commission and the public and community involved in this conversation. So with that, we will move back to item two, which is a public hearing for proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments. Mr. Perser.
Mayor, counsel. One moment here. Got to have a PowerPoint, you know. Ah, there we go. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Uh, we're here to ta- today to, to talk about the FY twenty-three budget. It is the end of, of a long road, a long process. I appreciate everybody's involvement in, in that. Um, so to begin with, with an agenda, you know, we're here to, you know, first talk about, uh, in gen- in, in brief, uh, the overall process and then also the, uh, FY twenty-three proposed budget and what makes up that FY twenty-three budget. Our hope is to end with any questions and leave with, uh, your, your approval of the FY twenty-three budget. Uh, as far as process goes, uh, we started this in, in February, you know, between meeting with mayor, council, uh, initially over the line item budget, moving towards public, uh, budget workshops. Lot of engagement, a lot of discussion. Uh, thank you. We are now towards the end of this process where we're seeking to we get the approval of this, uh, proposed budget. So we can then begin to want to appropriate and then execute the budget. So looking at the total numbers, uh, the total city budget for the, for twenty-three is two hundred nineteen million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand and thirty-nine dollars. Uh, looking at the chart, you'll see on the, on the left side, the pie chart, you see a breakdown of how that breaks down from its different components, from a, a personnel, from a carry forward, from an operating. Uh, then you see a kind of a tree chart on the right that tells you what departments make up the, you know, largest sections of that. So looking at the, the pie chart, you can see that a large, uh, majority of this is, is with items that we've already approved in, in the carry forward capital, thirty-nine percent of this budget is from items we've approved, uh, in prior, uh, years. Um, the next up is the, the largest is, is the, the personnel side of things. When we look at from a, a department standpoint, you can see that the wastewater, police and fire make up the vast majority of the budget. As far as from, from, from size standpoint. Now, if we, if we turn and, and look at the different components of it, so going down a layer, uh, beginning with revenue, looking at the governmental funds, governmental meaning our general fund, our impact fees and our public, um, safety, uh, funds. When we tally those together, we, we're looking at revenue of eighty-six million, nine hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars. Little over half of that comes from property taxes. Uh, twenty percent of that comes from intergovernmental revenue, that's your liquor and your, uh, you know, sales tax revenues, licensing permitting, impact fees. And several others round out, uh, the total revenue. The total revenue for the governmental funds is the eighty-six million, nine hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars. Uh, moving towards our expense side, you can see that total operating expense for governmental funds. Just explained, um, you can see is one hundred and eighteen million, six hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. Looking at the pie chart on how that breaks out, vast majority of that is in personnel. The next, uh, largest would be in your carry forward capital. That is items like the precinct we approved last year, the fire stations, uh, those types of things. And then smaller operating, uh, you know, and other capital expenses. The largest departments in that make up, uh, the governmental fund side of the budget is public safety between our police and our fire. That's, that's over half of our budget. Uh, you throw in, uh, the parks department, uh, with an additional twenty-six percent of the, of the hundred and eighteen million. Gives you, uh, an idea of, you know, where the dollars for this are going to. If we look at things from a capital improvement standpoint, that is a standalone fund. Uh, this is, this is new. Uh, we wanted to match the way we noticed the, the public. That way, if, if there are any questions, we, uh, they can easily follow along with what we, what we've published. Uh, the capital improvement funds is really, uh, fourteen million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. That's, uh, when you look at it, um, all in carry forward. So those represent, uh, expenses that we've already approved in, 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 in prior years. It's your, your precinct, fire stations and that. Are you seeing, uh, fire and police are really the only departments that are participating, um, on this item. When we look at our enterprise fund, uh, the total revenue, uh, starting with revenue is forty-nine million, seven hundred and nine thousand and nine dollars. Uh, the vast majority of that revenue is in utility sales revenue. Uh, followed by our assessment revenue. We have some charges for service, guard, garbage administration, round up the total, uh, revenue. You know, that is received by our, the, the enterprise fund, Public Works, um, team. When you look at our enter, the, the expense side of things, the total expense is eighty-six million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars. Um, on this, you can see the majority of that is in carry forward, about forty-two percent. Looking at the, the pie chart on, on the, on the left, followed by our, you know, capital and then personnel. Uh, wastewater, looking on the, at the tree chart on the right. Wastewater, looking on the, at the tree chart on the right, is the vast majority of, of where these expenses lie, all by water at thirty-three percent. That, in summary, very much a summary, makes up the total budget of two hundred and nineteen million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand and thirty-nine dollars. As far as next steps go, we are seeking approval to establish the budget at that dollar amount. There is no foregone revenues. There's nothing to do there, at least at this point. With that approval, we will then come back with Mr. Nary's assistance and coming within ordinance to make this a final. With that, I'll, I'll stand for any questions, council, whatever you guys need.
Thank you, Mr. Perser. Council, any questions for staff? Councilwoman Scherer.
Are we looking to approve it tonight? Or are we just look, like softly approve it verbally? Is that what you're looking for? Or are we waiting until there's an ordinance before us?
Mayor, councilwoman, straighter, we're looking for an approval of, of the budget. That way, we can come back with an ordinance and to finalize it. So we're looking for approval.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to collaborate on that?
Yes. So, Mr. Mayor, yeah, you are approving that budget number. You will have a public hearing. So there will be, you can't make it less than that. But that, this is asking for that approval to bring the ordinance forward. You do have an opportunity, there is an opportunity tonight for the public to weigh in, as well as with your ordinance, you can allow a public comment again, if you wish.
This is your court. Do we have anyone sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Terry Dennington. Evening, Terry. If you would state your name and address for the record, you'd be recognized for three minutes.
My name is Terry Dennington. My name is Terry Dennington, and I reside at forty-five eighty-one West Big Creek Street in Meridian, eight, three, six, four, two. And the comments I wanted to make was I just wanted to appreciate and all the, all the work that you guys have done. Thank Chris Johnston for getting a printed copy for me because I'm very much, you know, look at it, make notes, highlight, think about it, see what people are doing. So I appreciated that. And then I also appreciated Brad Perser taking time to go through all of my comments and questions and things as I went through that budget. But all of the thought that went in from all of the departments was, it was really interesting to just watch each budget item and read them and see what they were requesting, why they were requesting it, what they saw, what their needs were that were coming up. So I thought that was great to see all of that coming across. I did want to make a comment about the fact that you guys were being logical in the city van, the maintenance van that you need, and the fact that the lease van was available to compensate for buying a new vehicle. So you were being, between those, being it, using it wisely instead of saying, we're just going to go out and buy something. We're going to look within our own departments to see what we can use and be frugal and useful with the people's money. So I thought that was great. I did have a comment on the water district. Just, just because they're going to be, their objectives are that they're going to be doing six additional wells that are going to be drilled for by twenty twenty-five. And so I just wanted to make a comment, being very cognizant of water because it's very precious. And to be aware that we, I know the city's growing and that we have all of that happening, but I think that we need to just be really well aware of what they're doing and how they're going to be using that water and not, not waste it at all. The last comment was on the, I wanted to know how the comprehensive plan of the city worked in conjunction with the comprehensive financial plan. If one is just a more of a wish list, and then what they're looking for is, as you're looking out five years ahead. So I just wanted to kind of get a feel for how that works. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Terry. Council, any questions? Thank you very much. It's quick, we have a mail sign up.
Mr. Mayor, that's the only, that was the only sign in.
If there is any males here that like to provide testimony on the budget at this time or online, if you'd like to come forward or use the raises your hand feature on Zoom. Seeing no one coming forward or raising their hand. Brad, would you have any final comments?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. And let that, council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I'm going to give a, I think that last comment from Terry was a question. So here's kind of a snapshot answer. I'll, I'll provide on that. The comprehensive plan identifies the, the land uses that we anticipate. Will, as we grow and expand outward, how those, what, how the lands will be intended to be utilized and zoned when it is ultimately annexed into the city. And then with that, we look at how we develop our existing levels of service for public utilities, public safety, things like that. And we determine what the long-term capital costs are to maintain those and serve the citizens as we grow over a designated timeframe. So we create a, a financial plan that tracks how we're going to spend these large capital expenditures to meet the growth of our city in accordance with the anticipated land uses that our comprehensive plan designates. So those two somewhat marry together. So year over year, we're kind of tracking and budgeting, not only to make sure we can cover the current fiscal year's issues and needs, but also knowing that we've got upcoming expenditures in future years. So it's, the tools work well together. And that's a very general explanation how we use them. Does that help? Thanks for asking it.
Thank you, Councilman Burton.
Mr. Mayor.
What? Councilman Burton.
And it's real quick with the mic. The budget process is a ton of work from finance. And just hearing comments that we did tonight, some praise for our staff, the things that are maybe seem small are really important to all of us up here. And talking to our citizens one-on-one, answering questions, making sure that not only the electeds are available, but our staff's available from the start to finish. And this has been probably eight months. You're about ready to start next year's. Is long and, and plodding. It's very public and very purposeful. And you all do a great job. Todd, your whole team. It's great leadership that you're providing. And just hearing a citizen say thank you means a lot because we know that's really important to all of us. So lots of public meetings to discuss this and vet this publicly. We've all heard from citizens, neighbors in grocery stores and at, at meetings like this. So I think it's culminated into a very sound and defendable and appropriate budget for the city. We're maintaining levels of service that our citizens deserve and expect. That is critical. That's something that Meridian is not going to change. The big things are the big things for us. Public safety, safe community, extremely efficient and effective and clean water and sewer. Beautiful parks. It may seem simple, but there's a lot of work that our entire city team does to make Meridian, Meridian. It's the best city in the state bar none. Undene it appropriately, as our citizens expect and deserve is a key part of that. So got to have the best people. We do. You got to fund them appropriately to be exceptional in what they do. I think this budget helps accomplish that. So thanks to the team for great work.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Burton.
No one, no one speaks more eloquently than Councilmember Burton. So I have nothing to add other than the fact that above and beyond what our, our financial department does and leadership by Director La Boy. Hats off to the rest of our staff and directors and the leadership that they provide. You know, every meeting that I've been in, we, we talk about the people's money. It's never our money. And, and a lot of times it's real easy to look at budget as I don't know, quasi monopoly money because it's not really tangible in our own bank accounts. And so, but that's not how we operate. And that's not how I've ever seen any member of any level of staff approach the budget. We, we approach the budget as the people's money. And hats off to our leadership team and the fine work that you all do.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hogan.
I appreciate the work by finance department. It's always very thorough and all the departments and the work that they go through. And it's, it's quite the process that you kicked off with your department's mayor. And, and I just wanted to note that this is a public safety heavy budget, as it should be. I, we are growing community. We've grown rapidly. And we certainly need personnel to, to staff that. And that comes into the realm of the public safety area. You know, we're, we've undertaken building two fire stations as well as a, a North Meridian Police Precinct. We have to staff those. And when you count up the numbers total for fire and police, that's forty-six people that we will be hiring in this next fiscal year. That's a huge number, but we're facing unprecedented growth. And, and that also includes mayor, council agreed with your recommendation that we needed six SRO, school resource officers to staff our elementary schools within our, without, within our city boundaries. You know, it, it's unfortunate we have to do that, but it's necessary in, in the world today and what we see happening around the country. But it was, it was, it's the right thing to do. And, and we I, I definitely support this, this budget. And it is a lot of money. We're very cognizant. It, this isn't other people's money. This is our money as well. We're residents. We pay the property taxes. My parents pay the property taxes. My kids, with my grandkids pay the property taxes. And, you know, it, so it becomes a family budget. And that's how you approach it. You know, it's, it's important to maximize our resources, do what we can, what we have to do, but at the same time, do it as efficiently as possible. So I appreciate your efforts, mayor, and putting this together. And for the council's work, we serve as liaisons to different departments, and we sit down with them and go through their budgets. It's a lengthy process, but it is very thorough. So appreciate everyone on council who, who do that work as well. It's, it's good work. So I'm certainly in support of this budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
I'm happy to make a comment as well. Just, you know, I'm, I'm proud of this budget. I think a lot of hard work went into it. It's a frugal budget. You know, there's not a lot of fat in here. I agree with the comments that it's a public safety oriented budget. And especially, I appreciate the prioritization of the new SRO positions. I, I think it's incredibly important that we do what we can as a city to keep our kids safe, especially at school right now in this environment. And so I just really appreciate you putting that in there and, and feel really good about this budget. Happy to make a motion at some point, but I'll, I'll check if others have comments as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I'm happy to keep my comments brief. I think my colleagues have captured a lot of, of my feelings. You know, we're a, we're a blessed community. And mayor, you're blessed to have the best staff in the country, the best directors, the best finance staff. I think Brad does the finance department disservice by putting up just one slide that shows the time and attention they put into putting forth our budget. Their efforts make our city look really, really great. And as a, as a taxpayer, as a resident, as a council member, I'm, I'm very, very proud. I know we all are. I'll, I'll cut kind of the chase for, for where I'll sit tonight. It probably won't come as much of a surprise. We were in our budget hearings. I voiced the concern about seventy million dollars in allocated revenue. And I've struggled with supporting a budget that continues to take the three percent property tax increase until we have acknowledged what we're going to do with that seventy million dollars. Meridian residents, we, we see the cost of, of groceries, of our utilities. We've had Republic Services before us tonight with a, with a rate increase. We are likely headed into a recession. And to me, I do not think that now is the right time for us to be increasing taxes while we continue to have a seventy million dollars sitting in our piggy bank. So I appreciate the effort of the council, the mayor, our amazing staff. It's not a budget that I can be in support of tonight.
Thank you. Counsel, if I could just say from a, my perspective, a thank you to you all. You all have made this budget better. I know, I know this budget required you a lot to go out on, take some pretty good big leaps with the number personnel, with the capital expenditures, the investment in all of our employees. This is not insignificant nor lost on me. You asked good questions. You're a part of the process. Like I say, I think this is a better budget today than when it started. And I think it will continue to provide the services that our residents need, expect, and the tools that our employees need and deserve to provide the level of expectations of services to our community. So thank you for your diligence, commitment and involvement in that process. And with that, I'd be happy to take a, any action.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
Move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion of a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, all favors signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay. Guys have it. And the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
Make a brief comment and then a motion. You know, the reason we have the city we have today is a result of the cumulative budgetary actions that came before us, right? And it's hard to take the three percent, but I think it's been outlined in this budget very clearly how incredibly critical it is for our public safety that we do so. And with that in mind, and that reasoning, and all the good reasons that every council member has brought up, I'd like to move that we approve the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget in the amount of two hundred and nineteen million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand and thirty-nine dollars. And have that brought back to us by ordinance at a future meeting.
Second.
I have a motion of a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Cavanagh, would you like a roll call?
Yes, please.
If, with that, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Straighter.
Aye.
Burton. Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
No.
Horton.
Aye.
Hogan.
Aye.
Five eyes, one no, and the motion is agreed to. And we'll see that back here on September sixth. Thank you all. Todd, please give our best to the entire team for all their work. Counsel, next item up is item three, which is a public hearing for Julie Rivers Office condominiums, S H P twenty twenty-two dash zero, 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 nine. We will open this public hearing with staff comments from Mr. Dodson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. Hopefully mine's a lot faster than the others, other presentations. As noted, it is a short plot, a very simple condominium plot, which subdivides the airspace, the land and everything beneath staying the same. Site consists of approximately four acres of land. It's already zone CC located at the northeast corner of Linder and Eustick Roads. Property received development agreement modification in twenty twenty-one to amend the concept plan for this site that had different layout of commercial buildings and instead proposed this layout, as you can kind of see on the left picture. All eight buildings have received administrative as well as building permit approvals. So they are currently under construction. If you drive down Linder, you can't miss them. This short plot request is to condominiumize each office building into four tenant suites. So eight times four is thirty-two. So it'd be thirty-two condos for the purpose of ownerships. Staff has reviewed the proposed short plot and deems it to be compliant with our U D C six B five A. And after that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Joe, council, any questions for staff? Okay. Is the applicant here? Like to come forward? Say your name and address for the record. Be recognized for up to fifteen minutes.
Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Justin Waters, and I live at thirty-seven oh three West Bismarck Drive here in Meridian. We, as Mr. Dodson explained, we're getting close to actually finishing some of the buildings. And so we're now ready to do our, get our plot recorded. And so we're now ready to get our plot recorded so that we can close these buildings to those who have purchased them. So they're, they're nice buildings. They, they look, they'll look nice and add a nice, add some nice businesses for the area. There's been a lot of excitement in these buildings for small, medium sized businesses to be able to have their own space.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
So 32 units, eight buildings. It's possible to have 32 different owners of these condos. How is it going to work with the maintenance for the entire community? I assume there's going to be some sort of business association that will manage that. What happens if you have, you know, some of these owners that don't pay their dues, don't participate in the way that they need to? What, how's that going to look when you have one building that maybe isn't kept in the same condition as another? Or it's kind of what we run across when we have these kind of buildings that have multiplicity of owners versus tenants, which usually will have a property management company that's managing them. But if you're selling these, what's that going to look like for the upkeep?
Yeah, it's actually a lot like what you just explained. It has an association that will have a property management company that will run it. And the, the nice part about what you had brought up is that the association actually owns the exterior of the project. And so it will be maintained equally at a, at a level that will be up to standards because the ownership of the actual units for each individual owner is only the inside of the buildings.
Counsel, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor, I know this has nothing to do with.
Councilmember Burnt.
I know my question isn't going to be, is not what we're voting on. Just, just, I just, I'm wanting to know, are these units going to look exactly like what this picture looks like?
Yes.
Identical.
Yeah, the tile, I mean, the tile is a little bit, looks a little bit different in real life, but like more of the texture of it looks a little bit different. But it's, it's 98% like that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Houghlin.
I respond to Councilman Burton because this is a half mile away from my house and I drive past all the time. I actually think they look better than what the picture depicts.
Thank you.
It's, it's a little soft. It just looks better than, that's, that just seems a little harsh than what they look, really look like when you drive by, so.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Clerk, anyone sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I did not check in the back, but no one has signed up online. I will go get that now.
Okay, is there anybody here that'd like to provide testimony on this item or online? I'd like to provide testimony on this item. Please use the raise your hand feature on Zoom. Okay, seeing no one coming forward to provide testimony, does the applicant wave their final closing comments? Applicant will wave their final closing comments. So counsel, I will turn this public hearing over to you for disposition.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Seems like a straightforward request. I think the buildings look nice. It's pretty much underway. It's just a question of ownership. Happy to make a motion that we close a public hearing.
Second motion.
Have a motion a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, all favors signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay. Guys have it and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
After considering all staff, applicant and public test voting, move to approve file number SHP 2022-0009 as presented in today's staff report. And just wish you luck on your project. It seems like a nice looking project.
Second motion.
Have a motion a second. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Burnt. Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Horton.
Aye.
Houghlin.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries and the item is agreed to. Thank you very much and good luck. Counsel, next item on the agenda is item four, public hearing continued from April 26, 2022 for Black Cat Industrial Project H 2021-0064. We will continue this public hearing with staff comments from Mr. Hood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am presenting tonight on behalf of Alan Tiefenbach, which if you hadn't heard, Alan, we lost Alan. We're going into our second week now. He's moved on to greener pastures in Montana. So I want to thank him for his service. He left us in a pretty good position, but I am covering this project for him this evening. The application before you is a proposed annexation of approximately 127 acres of land currently zoned RUT in Ada County. It's located primarily on the west side of South Black Cat Road, but there is about one acre located on the east side, which you can see on the vicinity map on the screen now, which makes this property, what's, that's to be developed contiguous to existing city limits. So we got I-84 to the south. West Franklin Road is just to the north of the site. The annexation request originally included approximately 130 acres of land in the proposed IL zoning district to allow an industrial development of more than 2 million square feet and annex that one acre property I just mentioned and called your attention with R15 zoning. So primarily IL, but the one acre property on the east side of the road is proposed for R15 zoning. The annexation boundary has been reduced by approximately 3.6 acres due to one of the owners rescinding their permission to annex. And you can kind of see that parcel here that when the application was submitted, it's about a three acre parcel, but once you account for the right of way for Black Cat, it was roughly three and a half or 3.6 acres. But about a three acre site, if you exclude the right of way, they've rescinded. So should the annexation request be approved? That would result in a roughly again three acre county enclave surrounded by the proposed industrial development in the future. I will also call to your attention on the revised site plan. We'll get there in a couple of minutes. The potential fire station site that was located on the northeast side of the property has also been removed from the conceptual site plan. Comprehensive plan, future land use map designations. There's actually three on this property. The one acre on the east side of Black Cat is designated for medium high density residential. And then about a third of the property is designated for mixed employment, or excuse me, low density employment. So that would be largely the property along the fringe of Black Cat. And then mixed employment, which is roughly the west two thirds and then along the interstate has that mixed employment designation. As noted on your agenda for this evening, the project was continued from April 26. It was actually on the March 1st agenda as well. Continued largely to allow the applicant more time to address traffic and infrastructure improvements and craft DA provisions and findings. The applicant has prepared those draft DA provisions and findings to be included in a development agreement if the subject annexation is approved by council. Since the last continuance, staff has met with the applicant and prepared a memo that provides commentary regarding those draft DA provisions. Because staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial originally, DA provisions and findings for approval have not been prepared for this project by city staff. I do want to call to your attention a couple of other things. Today, ACHD provided a clarification email on the Franklin Road improvements between Black Cat and McDermott. They sent us an email, which I don't know if I sent to the clerk. It was late today, so I don't know if you have that, if made in the packet or what, but I'll just briefly summarize that from ACHD, just clarifying that in fact, design for, again, the Franklin Road improvements is in their draft budget to design the intersection at Franklin and McDermott and do the widening between Black Cat and McDermott. However, funding for that hasn't, is not guaranteed yet as the ACHD budget is on next week's actually agenda. So on August 24th, it's scheduled for hearing and adoption. So also just note that construction of those improvements, so that's design, the, the funding for designing of those improvements and then constructional improvements would likely occur between or around 2025 or 2026 or even potentially later. So I wanted to just call that to your attention too. Just a couple more things also today, did receive an email correspondence from the applicant. They provided me a memo from Kim Warren in our Parks Department that I hadn't seen before with some comments. And again, I'll just summarize that, that the clerk has that as well. Hopefully it's in your packet, but if not, it basically is, includes a condition to have them construct part of a multi-use pathway network generally paralleling and along the mid mile collector that runs east west through the property. And then they also attached that same email, updated findings and conditions document. I did not have, did not perform a side by side analysis of that document, but you do have access to that. So if you want to see the latest and greatest of their proposal for again, DA provisions, conditions of approval and facts and findings conclusions, you do have that in your packet as well. And then finally, I'm not going to go into or explain, you know, all the concept plan and the elevations and the zoning. Again, this is the third time this has been on your agenda. But I do want to call to your attention a few of the items in that memo dated August 3rd that Alan and I, mostly Alan, but I did play a role, played a hand in crafting some of the language in there. Just a few of the highlights or newer, newer issues, if you will. So DA provision number four and also DA provision number nine, they kind of both address the east west collector. I'm going to go to this exhibit. I think it, it really tells the story and some of staff's concern about the timing of that east west collector. So you can see the applicant is proposing blue is kind of first phase. So three phase project, first phase are the roadway improvement, infrastructure improvements that are proposed by the applicant. Some of staff's concern is we have had discussions with the property owner directly to the west and they are a large landholder there about developing that property as well. So having that collector be stubbed to that adjacent property. So the extension of can, can occur with development there is just something for council to consider. And again, something that staff thinks is a good idea anyways. So again, exhibit B, DA provision nine and DA provision four all to some degree address that. And that's on page, start at the bottom of page three and goes on to the top of page four of the staff memo prepared for this evening. And then DA provision number eight, the Rosenloch drain. I don't believe this was discussed at the previous hearing. So city code does require any irrigation lateral canal that you're going to allow to remain open. That needs to be an explicit action by the city council. So you will need to please, if you're going to move this forward tonight, approve it. Please do address whether you want the Rosenloch to be tiled, piped, covered, or if you're okay with them leaving that open. Just a couple of things more on the Rosenloch. So again, the Rosenloch runs along the north boundary of this property. Generally it's split, you know, right on the property line. So the, the middle of the irrigation facility is half on the, on the north property, offsite of this property and half on this property. I need to say this kind of, I'm not too concerned about safety, meaning I'm not too worried with just the general nature of the land use here. I'm not too worried about kids getting in and drowning and those type of safety concerns we would have in a residential subdivision. The main reason, just to bring up the Rosenloch again, except for that you have to, to make action on it is I am concerned about the potential connectivity of when the properties to the north develop. And if we have this open drain and having to build bridges across, I just think there's going to be something to bring to your attention anyways, that if you allow it to remain open, I think it's going to be more and more difficult to have this feel like a big project that's all integrated together and works together well. If there's a fairly significant irrigation lateral that bisects this project from the four, five, six other properties to the north that will redevelop over time as well. And this isn't in the document, but I do also want to just address or bring to your attention. And I don't think it's intentional and maybe they even will. Again, staff didn't craft conditions of approval, but that, that three acre out parcel, want to make sure that if this is the roadway network, the collector's right there just offsite. They have a drive aisle internal that's just missing that parcel, that we do provide some cross access to that parcel from this project. So we aren't looking at another driveway or two to Black Cat in the future. So there's not a site specific condition of approval. But again, just something to think about with the removal of that three acres. Again, don't want that to feel like it's an afterthought and when, and someday in the future, they will annex and develop. Don't want them to feel like they're a standalone project, that there is some resharing of access points to the arterial. So with that, I think I covered most of my comments. This, again, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend denial. As of earlier today, there was no new testimony provided in laser fish that I could find. And with that, I will stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. It's nice to hear your voice back at City Council meetings, even under some unfortunate circumstances. But counsel, any questions for Mr. Hood?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Caleb, in regard to the ACHD 2023 draft budget and improving Franklin McDermott intersection and widening that roadway, is that all an ACHD project or are they going to have to coordinate with the city of Nampa to complete that? Because I don't, I don't know exactly where that boundary ends, if it's to the west of McDermott or not.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perrow. It's a good question. The, the county line does end there at, at the intersection of McDermott. So I imagine there is going to be some coordination. I don't know if that's Canyon Highway District or Nampa Highway District for who, whose jurisdiction that is, but I imagine there is going to be some coordination with them and maybe even IEDD because State Howie 16 is getting real close and what they're doing with some of those improvements currently. But I don't think that's an obstacle that can't be overcome. But yeah, just some coordination, certainly.
Counsel, any additional questions for staff? Then with the applicant, like to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Deborah Nelson, 601 West Bannock Street here on behalf of the applicant. Members of the applicant team are here with me this evening and may be available to answer any of your questions or jump in with any additional points. It has been several months since you've heard from us. So we, I'd like to start with a quick recap. As has been covered in prior hearings, industrial space is needed now in Meridian. Now, the city has less than 1% vacancy of industrial versus 14% vacancy in office. This is both an immediate problem and a longer term problem because there's no industrial land that's currently available for development and only a small amount is planned with access to services. Less than 1% vacancy means that new businesses cannot cite here and expanding businesses may be forced to relocate outside of the city. You've received letters and testimony from area businesses talking about the inability to find needed space, including from Cincy, Northwest Fulfillment, Infinity Pools and others. Also, local jobs are needed now. 78% of Meridian residents currently get in their cars to drive to Boise, Nampa and further. The project meets the 10 mile plans, goals for job creation, supporting the creation of 2,000 jobs on this site. Significantly, we have a large local business that is ready to take 317,000 square feet of space within this project if it is approved this evening. They have 440 jobs that they plan for this location. And these are good jobs. The average wage of all of the jobs will be eighty-five thousand dollars. And the timing is right for your consideration tonight because we now have a defined plan to phase our project with road improvements. We heard from the council that you understood the importance of industrial and the importance of this site. But you wanted more certainty on traffic. You directed us to complete the TIS and phase the project with road improvements and to work with staff on conditions of approval. ACHD has now accepted the TIS. The project will meet all ACHD conditions. Road improvements and phasing will ensure that all mitigation is completed and that there is an improved connection to the interstate. On Highway sixteen, since we last spoke, ITD has now secured the right-of-way on Franklin east to McDermott. The bidding is done and the contract has been awarded. Construction is scheduled to begin November of this year and complete March twenty twenty-four. And this includes the connection to Franklin. On Franklin, since we last spoke, the Idaho Legislature allocated thirty-six point five million dollars to help ACHD accelerate improvements to connect to Highway sixteen. ACHD has published their twenty-twenty-three proposed budget and twenty-twenty-three twenty-four proposed budget. As was noted before, it will be voted on next week. This budget includes five million dollars for design and right-of-way acquisition for the Franklin widening and the Franklin McDermott intersection. Once the budget is approved, construction is anticipated to begin in twenty twenty-five. This timing aligns well with our project and with Highway sixteen's schedule. Councilmember Pro, you asked about the small stretch to the west that falls within Canyon County. That is in the jurisdiction of Nampa because that property has now been annexed. All of the right-of-way has been acquired and Nampa is in discussions with ACHD for an MOU for ACHD to complete that work. On Black Cat, according to the TIS, Black Cat functions well now and meets all levels of service until nine hundred and sixty thousand square feet. We will install the frontage improvements in the turn lanes that are accessed before the project even begins to allow safe turning without delays. Then we will limit our development to nine hundred and sixty thousand square feet of occupancy until Black Cat is widened. We heard the council's request at our last hearing that Black Cat was important. We also heard public testimony about Black Cat. So the applicant has spent the last four months getting all of the needed right-of-way under contract to widen Black Cat from our site all the way to Franklin, which involved acquiring seven different parcels. ACHD has now begun the process to purchase that right-of-way and is preparing for that Black Cat widening. Previously, this was also a topic in our prior hearings. ACHD was not open to a cooperative development agreement on Black Cat. But now they said they are open to that pending staff and resources availability. We've proposed a phasing plan to align with the triggers in the TIS. Prior to occupancy, we'll install the frontage improvements and turn lanes on Black Cat. We will not exceed that nine hundred and sixty thousand square foot of occupancy until Black Cat is widened to five lanes. And some striping and turn lane improvements are completed at the Franklin and Black Cat intersection. According to the TIS, this restriping is not needed until after one point three million square feet. But we have proposed to expedite this. According to ACHD's letter, this will help address capacity on Franklin. And the McDermott Franklin intersection will also be improved at this juncture. The TIS suggested adding a center lane here as an interim improvement until Franklin can be widened. That will accommodate the development up to one point six million square feet. ACHD is not requiring this improvement because it is addressed in the Franklin widening. But we agree to do this anyway if Franklin is not yet widened to make sure that all interim impacts are addressed. We will not exceed one point five million square feet of occupancy until that Franklin widening is done. Also, we will extend the east-west collector as development calls for it, certainly along adjacent development within our site. And as soon as there is a connecting road proposed to the west to address Caleb's concern. And we will install a traffic signal on Black Cat as soon as it is warranted. Like other developments have done in the ten-mile area, we ask for flexibility on a couple of specific design elements to fit this use. The smaller flex buildings meet most of the design, excuse me, the smaller flex buildings on Black Cat meet all of the design requirements. And the larger buildings meet most of these design requirements. We ask the city to approve a few clarifications or changes. First, related to the buildings. You can see in the column to the left, that is in your plan. And the two columns to the right show our flex buildings and then the larger buildings, just two of those items to address. The plan says a max thirty percent parking in front. We ask to clarify that this can apply, on average, along the east-west collector to effectively park employees on the interior double-loaded buildings. We do need some parking along the frontage. But we can meet the thirty percent average on the east-west collector. This was supported by staff in our prior discussions. Second, on the windows, twenty percent windows across the front of all buildings is not practical for light industrial. We, on the larger buildings, we ask that you allow fifteen percent, on average, across the frontage of both the east-west collector and we would provide that as well along I eighty-four. This is an illustration of the parking. You can see that we have minimal parking along the east-west collector frontages. We do meet that thirty percent max on average. We've tried very hard to pull the parking behind the buildings as much as possible. In an illustration of the windows, this is one of the larger single-loaded building. The larger double-loaded buildings also have these corner treatments. Two other site-related items that we'd like to address. The street section, as was noted by Caleb, parks has requested we provide that ten-foot multi-use pathway within a fourteen-foot easement along the east-west collector instead of on the on-street bike lanes. The proposed, so we do provide that. Also, the proposed road section includes three twelve-foot travel lanes to provide safe turning movements and uninterrupted traffic flow rather than the two travel lanes shown in the plan. That is the, other than those changes, this matches your street section C. On the Rosenloft Drain, we do propose to keep this drain open. To date, the staff reports have not required this to be piped. It is a very deep drain that serves to recharge the groundwater. It straddles the property to the north and it is still in use for irrigation tailwater from the ag operations to the north, which is flood-irrigated. As Caleb noted, it is not an issue of safety. In fact, your code suggests that it's appropriate to limit piping where it is not a concern about safety. From a connectivity standpoint, ACHD's preference and ours has been to direct traffic to the collectors to funnel them up through the collector, to the proposed collectors to Franklin. There's not just one property to our north that would provide a single connection. There are multiple and it's appropriate for them also to use the east-west collector that will bisect their properties, again, to funnel to the west to the main collector system. In summary, looking at the benefits this project brings to the community. It improves traffic flow on Black Cat from widening and adding turn lanes at the frontage. At the signal when warranted, the developer has secured the right-of-way to expedite the improvements. We extend the roads and the pathways through the site to serve the larger employment area. And importantly, we provide two million square feet of needed industrial space to serve this growing economic sector and help Meridian businesses have a place to expand. In doing so, we support the creation of two thousand jobs to capture some of those seventy-eight percent of Meridian residents that are currently commuting. As noted, we do have a large local business that is ready to take down over three hundred thousand square feet and bring four hundred and forty jobs. This company has indicated that they strongly prefer to be in Meridian, but they do need to make a decision now. And so if this project does not bring forward that much space for them, they will need to locate in a different city. We have worked with staff on conditions of approval. And we have brought copies of those this evening. If that would be handy for you to look at, I'm happy to pass those out. As Caleb noted, we also provided some minor adjustments and it is in redline. And so that is in the system in case you want to see what the adjustments are. They include revisions to address the parking and the windows that I've outlined here. And also added in the parks condition that was received from Kim Warren. And also to address the east-west connection extending to the west when there is a public street there to connect to, to address Caleb's concern. Happy to discuss any questions you have about the development, about those conditions of approval. And we have our entire team here this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Council, questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Deb, can I ask you to, maybe to focus on one piece of it? And you just, you referenced, and let me start over. From the last public meeting when it got continued to here to today, I want to talk about the changes since that. And there's a number of changes, I think, or clarifications with regards to the phasing and onboarding of the project as a whole. But separate from that, the metrics of the project, the two, the last two you referenced were that are new, inclusion of the parks pathway as requested. The collector connection to the east, as you referenced. But can you summarize what the other changes to the project itself are? If any, from the last hearing to today, other than phasing and those other two?
Do you want me to start with the updates on the roadway network or start with updates on the project site? What's your focus?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
So the updates were certainly helpful, obviously. But are there changes? I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything specific. For example, when you last heard it, there was, I'm making it, fifteen percent windows on the frontage and now it's twenty. I know that's not part of it, but, or, you know, it was forty feet high and now it's thirty-eight feet high. Any tangible differences? And if there's not, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss specifics of how the project itself, the components of it have changed, if any, separate, separate from the phasing and you described.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Borton, I think so. Those changes that we're requesting to the ten-mile plan related to the max parking and the windows are not new. So that is consistent with what we've asked before. And I think there was a discussion at the last meeting about, we could further that by getting those into conditions of approval. One evolution of that through, and that's part of why we had some cleanup to do on this, was staff did ask for the window treatment along I eighty-four. And so there's some changes in the language to address that along I eighty-four. The parks condition, as you noted, although it didn't actually change our design because we had already, and this came up at our last hearing, we'd already been working with ACHD on, and it seemed like the city as well prefers the multi-use pathway over the bike lanes. ACHD certainly was leaning that direction. So we had suggested that as an alternative to the on-street bike lanes already. So her condition falls right in line with that. And we've just added it as a condition of approval to capture her details of the fourteen-foot easement around it with the ten-foot pavement. See, let me just look at the redline here to see if there's anything else. So since we provided these conditions of approval, looking at this map. So we have agreed to bring in this Franklin McDermott intersection improvement that was not required by ACHD. And so you saw a similar map that Caleb presented that we had previously submitted with our proposed conditions of approval. And since then, we have decided to add this, even though it wasn't required by ACHD, again, to try to address what we heard from the council, that you want to make sure we're addressing, you know, any pain points to make sure that this traffic really does flow at each trigger along the way. And so that is a new offer as well. And that actually is not even in the conditions of approval yet. So that is one item that we have not added since those were proposed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
And in prep for today, I didn't think there was much more than what you've described, if anything. And I know we expressed the primary concern that took a lot of the last hearing was the timing and the phasing of the transportation improvements and trying to gather more data. And I think you've done a great job with this presentation, trying to answer some of those questions. One of, so this is, it's very helpful, I think, what you provided. One of the challenges that I recall discussing at the last meeting also included Black Cat Road and, you know, what's going to be heading to, or excuse me, coming from the, on the east side when that development comes in and it's Black Cat. Is its capacity going to be engulfed with nine hundred and sixty thousand square feet here? And impacting the development across the street? Is there any additional information on how you onboard and the timing of that in relation to what? I know you don't control, but what is coming across the street to the east?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Borton, so our traffic study does contemplate the surrounding development and, you know, obviously applies the growth factor like everyone does. So this is projected out to twenty thirty. And so the expectation, of course, is that improvements will be done long before then. But just in case they're not, that is why we've agreed to the caps so that we can't progress ahead of those improvements, no matter when they are done. But that, you know, but our TIS does contemplate additional development and the growth around us up to twenty thirty.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you. No, I appreciate the work that's been done. I can tell you guys really dug in a lot on this to phase it, work with ACHD and try to come up with a comprehensive plan, really to tackle the traffic issues, which I think was our number one concern. My only real remaining concern, I guess, is I think I'm looking at outdated proposed findings. If you sent a revised, if you sent a redline and it was in the last twenty-four hours, I did not receive it. So if you have a copy of that, I would appreciate it. So Deb, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you. So one of the things I did notice, and I'm glad that you have these updated ones. I did still see, I thought, a pretty big disconnect between your proposed findings and staff's comments. That was kind of my only real heartburn that I had left. I understand there's going to be some pain in terms of the Black Cat area has traffic concerns. We know that. I think this addresses those directly. I think it's appropriate. You've acquired a lot of right-of-way. That is a significant step. And I love the jobs and I think that's really important. Office space is not, unfortunately, office space right now is not really where the future is headed. This type of space is, I think it's great for economic development. I'm very supportive of this project overall. I just wanted to go through, maybe if you could walk through the latest version of the proposed findings and areas where you have disagreement with staff and kind of go, if you don't mind, going systematically through all of the ones where there's a disagreement and giving your take on it, and then we can kind of highlight those. And I'd like to then mull that over and kind of maybe hear from them if needed.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one, that's one, Brent.
That was question number four on my list as well. So thank you for.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, I'd be happy to. And so maybe just a general comment at the outset. This has obviously been a long project and and we appreciate all the work that staff has put into this and met with us so many times. Especially Caleb to come in at the end here and and work with us on this. We've been meeting with staff for for a period of years. So that said, Alan obviously didn't recommend approval to begin with, and I think the memo you received of late just, you know, brought forward the same points that you'd seen in the staff report. I don't think any of those statements you made were new or surprising probably. So I think a lot of the bulk of it, the substance, I guess, we viewed as a lot of it's about the use, the prior use preferring a different use here. But happy to walk through these and see, you know, where there may be specific points.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Would you be okay with it if we do a little back and forth as we kind of?
Go for it.
Okay, because I just think it's going to be really granular. That would just maybe be better. Cool. Thanks, Deb. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I think Councilwoman Schrader is probably referring to the notes that council made on the memo that was provided on August 3rd, and you're saying that you believe that those that that the statements that were made in that memo are not different from the staff report that was originally issued? Is that what you're, I'm understanding that you're saying?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Perro, as to the use, there's a lot of things that were brought forward from the staff report. As to remaining issues, I mean, support, there's not support there for some of our changes to the 10-mile plan. That's why we address those conditions specifically for you tonight again.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Perfect. So I see in section one, obviously, there was disagreement about the use. We knew that. But there, there was some pretty specific call out, I think, about self-storage, and I know you've agreed.
We were in agreement with that, yes.
And so where, where, if I look here on the new revised findings, where does it limit the uses?
So on 1.1A, this is where it just talks about the aisle zoning is appropriate. In the last sentence, their self-service storage facility will not be a primary use on the property.
Okay. And then I think there was another type of potential use that staff had mentioned, and I'm trying to recall where I saw that. It wasn't just self-storage. There was another.
Mr. Mayor, it's under section one of the staff memo. Would it be possible for staff to pull that memo up on this screen? And we can follow through with that. I know exactly which section Councilwoman Schrader is referring to.
Councilmember Schrader. On page two, so if I pull away from the conditions and just look at the memo then.
Yeah, I have.
On page two of that, of the staff's memo. However, there are still uses that could occur within the development based on the concept plan and aisle zoning that would not be totally consistent with the 10-mile plan vision. These uses include warehousing as a primary use, a freight terminal, equipment rental, sales and service, and vehicle impound sales and repair. Is that what you're?
Yeah, so clearly you're going to need warehousing. And I would imagine freight. But I thought, could you go into the equipment rental, vehicle impound? I guess uses.
I probably need industrial-based clients to weigh in on that.
I don't think we envision a tow yard or something here. So that's why I thought we could maybe go through that.
Wolf 675 Sun Valley Road. I can address that specific point. And in general, yeah, I, we agree that those aren't uses that we would vehicle impound. But if it's
Mr. Wolf, can you speak?
A vehicle impound, for example, what if it's Carvana and they have a finance division and they finance cars and they have to take them back as part of their inventory? I mean, there's just all sorts of kind of. I guess. You know, it's responsibility, obviously, the council to generate the best use for, for the city and what we started with in our very first presentation is we're in this community, we've done, we're the second largest lease of industrial space currently in the Treasure Valley. And our very first presentation was here, two of the kinds of uses that we have for this kind of property. One of them is this particular tenant and others, a lease that we just did. And our, our objective is we're going to own this stuff forever and we build Class A product and our objective is to bring Class A tenants to space. And so we're trying to demonstrate that with the, you know, putting a foot forward with an actual tenant here. And so I don't, we're happy to go through with staff. I think our intent is we have no intent of having an auto yard on the property, but if Carvana wanted to have a facility there where they stored a bunch of cars that were distributed out to the community and a bunch of employees that were high-paid or something like that, we certainly would want to have the ability to do that. So we want to exclude ourselves from a high-value use for the city and for the project.
Right, but you, I mean, like, for example, you would not envision a use of vehicle impound that would be on the keeping inventory of vehicles on the exterior of the building.
Yeah.
Right. So maybe it would make sense to specify that within the findings, because I think that would draw that distinction if it's Carvana and they're keeping building, you know, cars inside the building, that's one thing. We don't want this, and it won't. I believe you. You know, that that's your intention. I think we just like to paper things up the proper way. I didn't have any other issues with the uses, the other uses. Go ahead, Joe.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
How we're going to go, but I'll jump in on that, on that one question from the list from staff. I understand with the, with an aisle zone, these particular uses that staff says aren't totally consistent with the 10-mile plan. They may or may not necessarily be what you, what you intend anyway. As to self-storage, the proposed condition removes it from a principally permitted use and moves it to the conditional use category. Are there some of these? For example, perhaps you agree that vehicle impound could be a prohibited use. It's just not, let's just knock it out. Make that prohibited and make some of these others that staff is concerned on, at least move them from a permitted use to a conditional use. Similar to how self-service storage is. And as you contemplate that question, I'm looking at Caleb as well to see if one, I've just framed that correct and maybe that provides some sideboards to a use that you may or may not do ever anyway.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, I think your, your question is fine. I guess where my mind goes is just a little bit in the tracking of this over time. And, you know, our system is really set up to have the base zoning, not hunt through a development agreement that may be 20 years old to say, oh, did council prohibit that one use that's otherwise allowed in the zone and now requires a CUP? We can do it, but we're just a little, we become, I get a little freaked out when you do that and you take some of the uses that are otherwise principally permitted or prohibited and you say, well, except for this use and that use and no one's going to remember that and find the record and anyway, so your question is fine. And if you want to go there, we can do that. I just want to put that disclaimer out there that sometimes mistakes get made that way because it's outside of the normal zoning. And I think, not, not to beat the drum, but that's kind of why we're like, ME zoning makes the most sense because those uses are consistent with more consistent with the planned aisle. There are some uses that are consistent. That's why staff was saying ME, then we don't have to do this but for and add this one. Anyways, that's not your question, so I will stop.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perro.
And this question is for the applicant and for Caleb. Was there any conversation about doing a comprehensive plan amendment specifically to the 10-mile area plan as a part of this application? And would that have taken us through a different process? Because I feel like this is a significant enough acreage for us to not be considering such significant changes to our 10-mile area plan without going through a more formal process with you know, as we would do with anybody that would, that we would encourage to make a comprehensive plan map amendment with their application or before their application.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Perro, I'd be happy to jump in if you want. I know you directed at both of us. So at the, just as a reminder, the, the light industrial zone is an allowed plan with the 10-mile plan. So in the matrix of, that's published within the plan of the zones that are allowed, light industrial is one. And so all of the uses that would normally be allowed in that zone actually are expressly contemplated in the plan. Yes, the applicant did discuss that with staff when they initially came in for pre-application, the initial meetings. And at that time, and it's in the pre-app notes in the record, it was discussed that IL was an appropriate zone. And so that was the initial discussion. After that, you know, staff has pulled, pulled back and and raised concerns. And so that's, and that's why we have gone to a lot of the detail that we've put forward before you to try to explain. And in our first hearing, we did a lot of walking through the 10-mile plan and why the light industrial zone was the best zone and the best fit for this area, why it was contemplated in the plan and why it worked. But then also why industrial was such a great use here. So yes, a lot of, a lot of thought and discussion has, has gone into that. As to the uses, I think the Councilmember Borton's suggestion on the conditional use permit. You know, we need a ready site that's part of having available industrial. And so if there are uses that could be contemplated within a conditional use permit adds another layer that doesn't work for people's timing, and that was addressed at a prior hearing as well. I think you guys may remember Tim commenting on the speed that which people make decisions to get into industrial space. So I think it is easier to focus on the uses and as was testified, the outdoor, you know, vehicle impound certainly could come off the list. We worry about when it comes inside. Sorry, you missed my last comment responding to your question. I should have attention that you weren't there. I was just saying that the conditional use permit adds a, a delay that doesn't work for industrial tenants coming into businesses. And so it's better to, you know, kind of work on the use, outdoor vehicle impound not planned here. It's the indoor space we're trying to protect and make sure that those operations don't have restrictions on the type of use if they're typical light industrial uses.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Can we focus on self-storage will not be a primary use? I'd love it if we just said self-storage will not be a use. And if you needed to get a DA amendment, you could come back to us, but self-storage has no jobs attached to it. I mean, that's my biggest heartburn. I think there are others that share that concern. Just wanted to get some feedback on that.
Acceptable, yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
Thank you. I, I have not been under the impression this time, this entire time that this was, would be considered a light industrial complex. And so clearly you and staff are not on the same page about what that means because staff wouldn't have made this comment if you were on the same page. When you just stated that, you know, yes, I am very aware that IL is a zone that's permitted. That's not a question. The issue is, is the staff doesn't believe that that your proposal is, is really meeting the intention of the 10-mile plan. And so I want specific comment on that rather than under, you know, trying to explain what uses are, are permitted in the aisle zone.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Perro, I'm, I'm not sure what else to add beside that history, but perhaps, you know, that's a good question for Caleb. But early discussions, like I said, that are documented in the pre-app notes were that IL was an appropriate zone. There was evolution in that. As staff considered this, didn't support the use. That continues to be shown in, in this document, of course. So, you know, we had hoped with the direction we heard from the council of kind of recognizing the importance of this use, but focused on traffic that we have, you know, more productivity and working through these conditions of approval. But we've, we've done the best we can. There certainly were a lot of things that were perfectly fine on both sides. And, and this conversation has been going on for a long time, so we weren't surprised by the commentary we, we got from Alan, but, but he also did add some things that we were acceptable to add. Caleb raised some points, again, that connection to the west. So it has been collaborative wherever we can. So I hope that answers what you're trying to get at. I'm not sure I know.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
Thank you. Really what I'm trying to get at is we regularly have residents who come to us with concerns that we're not following a plan that was vote, that was, you know, invested in and, and voted on, on their behalf. It took a very long time to work on, not that, not only the comprehensive plan most recently, but the 10-mile plan when it was developed. And so I just want to honor that request by our residents that we stick as closely to what was intended as possible. And I want to, anytime we have a conversation, no matter which applicant it is that may stray, where staff feels like we are straying from that plan, I want to take it really seriously and flesh out whether it's something that's worth overriding with what the public has asked us to do. I, I have, I, I think the use, this, this for me is not an issue of whether this is a great use. This is clearly a use that will be super beneficial to this area. That's not a question in place. It's really just, you know, if, if you're asking us to, to really every one of these conditions that you proposed, there's something that staff has had to say that, that, that creates an issue for us to have to overcome. And that's, that's a big ask. So I appreciate Councilwoman Schrader's proposal to go through when these one by one, because I was going to make that same request. These aren't small things for us to consider. They're pretty significant, given what our residents have told us about the role they want us to play with, with our comprehensive plan and with the transportation network as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Okay, well, I feel like if we I would advocate just going through each of the proposed conditions of approval, pulling in from staff's memo, the comments as they apply, because I have that, but I'm probably going to need other people's help. And then I guess I'm kind of looking over at Caleb to chime in when he has a comment as well, if it's not covered. But I think if we go through it more, I think if we go through systematically, I think that would, that's, I don't, I, that's just me, but I, but I understand Councilwoman Perro's kind of like an on principle point, which I think is a different point. I'm not as hung up, I guess, personally on how this would fit into the 10-mile plan. I think if we go through it, we may be able to get to the right answer, but maybe I'm just being overly optimistic. I don't know. Okay, so I guess there's a question about I see that there was a comment from staff about all future buildings being subject to architectural design review. Would that fit with 1.1B? Do you think, Deb, or how do you want to tackle that? Or is there another point of disagreement? Where that belong, that goes however you want to take these, but yeah.
Councilwoman Schrader, yes, thanks for the opportunity. We don't have any concerns nor have, we understood that there would be an opportunity to get away from design review. We know that will be applied here. So that process will apply.
Great, so.
So this is in comment, that's staff's comment on our 1.1B, development of the subject property shall be generally consistent with the final site plan and conceptual building elevation submitted with the applications.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, that's a question if, if it.
So this language is taken from other projects. That's how we had to draft this because we didn't have draft conditions. So we looked at your other conditions, pulled in those standard conditions and started with that base.
Yeah, so maybe what would be clarifying then to give staff comfort, if that is still a concern, which Caleb, if that's not a concern, let me know. Would maybe be to, instead of ending it at applications, would be to specify, you know, including the architectural design review process.
Mr. Mayor. If, if I can just interject real quick, there's a little bit of a disconnect with the numbering too. And, and what is two on the screen or in the memo? And three A and one on the most recent, there's some overlap. And three A and one on the most recent, there's some overlap too, and some of the provisions, right? Like two on the screen talks about conceptual building elevations and then three A continues to talk about elevations and facades. And that's where some of the concern is addressed. And maybe just to cut to the chase there, I think with, I don't really have a, a problem with the window provision that, that was mentioned earlier. I do think the north property and trying to hold the line, and I appreciate just as a sort of an aside, but in the same vein, Councilwoman Perro's comment on respecting the comprehensive plan and the integrity of that, and that it was developed by our community and trying to uphold that. There's some level of concern that if that north facade of, of those buildings there doesn't meet the architectural standards, that we'll get something similar on the other side. And so it's this Pandora's box that opens up. And then if we get these warehousing buildings that are marginal, I'll just say it that way, that you could make a, you could make a case either way, right? You could make the findings that this is consistent with the plan or that it's not. There's some gray area there. But there is some concern that we want to still hold that development to the north to a high standard, the same standard that we're holding this project to. And if we don't have those elevations with some of those architectural concerns, they're going to want to match it and just will have blank walls and it'll be a tunnel of the sides of buildings that aren't interesting and just to say it bluntly ugly. So that, that would be my main concern, just to kind of paraphrase the concern on all the building elevations, concerns and architectural standards is, is what would be required on the north, the northern buildings that, that basically front the Rosenloft and the future northern properties that are yet to be developed in the city of Meridian.
Yeah. So Caleb, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Schrader.
You're the best. So Caleb, if, if they were open to the concept that you know, the buildings that are facing the outside of the development, those facades, you know, kind of follow these guidelines. And so if, if they were amenable to including in 1.1, I guess this would be E1 and the north facing building and the buildings facing Franklin, the north side of those facades, would that, would that take care of that concern for you?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilwoman Schrader, I think so, although you lost me on the numbering a little bit. I think you said 1.1 E1 and I I think we're in 1.1.
Maybe, I'm sorry, it's C1. I drew a little line.
Sorry, I turned my page and so then I.
My bad.
Oh, yes. Essentially, I think that one is. Yes, that would, that would address a lot of the concern anyways with.
Okay. And so is that some, you guys are chatting, so I give you a second, but is that something that you guys could live with? I'll let you kind of caucus. That's something that you could.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader, I guess I'd ask to, you know, kind of maybe table a few of these items like that. I, I can tell you that my understanding from the 10 mile plan and the early discussions have all been about which, um, street frontages that was, would be, those requirements would actually apply to normally. Our surrounding development, especially to the West, is expected to be industrial. Uh, so it's more about what's facing the, the street frontages there. So, um, I guess with that comment, I think we just have to, would, would have to huddle on.
Yeah, I get that. Maybe put a pin in that. We'll circle back to that. I put a little star next to it. So, okay. Okay. And so there's already a limitation on the buildings that are oriented towards South Black Cat. And I'm assuming that that limitation is reflected here. And Deb, if you could just point out where that is, so I can check that off my.
I apologize. Can you repeat that? I was noting down the facade question.
Yeah, I'm just looking through the, the planning memo under number two, their response to your initial findings. Buildings K1 to K6 are oriented towards South Black Cat Road and they're limited toward to 17,000 square feet. I think that we already say they're consistent with the 10 mile specific plan, but I wondered if your, if that limitation on their size is reflected in your findings.
My understanding from what staff's comment is here and welcome Caleb's, um, comments on that as well. But there, this is a description of what we've proposed and he's saying that the flex buildings have accomplished what's appropriate. But it's.
It's tied to the concept plan.
Interior larger buildings that he has objection to.
Yeah. Okay. Caleb, is that? That's accurate. Okay. Okay, cool. So we figured that out. Okay. A 15%, Caleb, you said you could live with that? 15% of the frontage?
I'm, I am not gonna, that's going to be a council call. I mean, we haven't adopted, kind of back to Councilwoman Perro's comment. That's in the 10 mile specific area plan. If you think 15 is appropriate. You know, it, it, I would challenge anyone to tell the difference between 15 and 20%, but I'm not comfortable saying that 15% is okay.
Okay, well, it's not gonna, it's not the hill that you're going to die on. So I appreciate that. I guess I'll look around. I don't have an issue with that compromise personally. These are industrial buildings. They are what they are, in my opinion. They look nice. I didn't have an issue with how they look. I think the fact that they're willing to table the issue, but maybe open to adjusting those north facing facades, I think was a pretty significant thing if it's considered. Okay. Parking, 30% of the linear dimension of the frontage. So now I'm in 1.1 C3. It sounds like you need this done this way because of the business use. That was my impression.
Right. Uh, to accommodate the employees, um, we need more than the 30% in front of a couple of buildings, but on average, we can meet that along the east west collector. The plan just says max 30% in front. So we're just asking for clarification that that can be averaged throughout the east west collector. And we have worked hard to pull that parking to the back of the buildings.
All right. And then I guess Caleb, do you feel that we need something that further references the, the specific buildings or do you? I know you're not going to make a call on that requirement, but.
Well, maybe, maybe comment on that if I, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Um, so a couple of things. That, the way it's worded is going to be difficult to track over time, right? Because you're doing it in phases. So first phase comes in and we've got a certain amount of frontage. And so they got to calculate that. And then is it like the last building? And then we verify that overall there's, so it's just the way it's worded is a, it, it's a little bit, I don't want to call it a nightmare, but it's, it's a tracking issue. And to calculate that on a, as a building comes in, okay, you're below 20, you know, you're over 30% and then keep that average is difficult. So if, if that's what you want to do, we'll, we'll try. I'm, I'm not too concerned. And in fact, in probably six weeks or so, you'll see some UDC code amendments and we're actually changing the standard. So, uh, for industrial buildings, we're going to go up to 50%. So just as an FYI, I think our code, if it's adopted, still got to go through the public hearing process. This really won't even be an issue once we change the code because you run into this problem with more industrial projects. Um, and have approved alternative compliance and then we're like, we need to change our code. So.
Okay. Thank you. That's really helpful. Actually, it's good feedback. Okay. Sounds like that'll be okay. If, uh, if it is, okay. East west collector in conformity with street design. All right, Deb, where is the next place that we have kind of a disagreement that you see?
The, the next one does talk about the street section. Maybe it's just better to be methodical. We addressed that in our presentation and outlined the deep, the deviations we have from street section C, which in are partly driven by the desire to have the multi-use pathway. Um, and then because we have three lanes instead of two.
So could you help me? Is that, are you talking about? Let's see, we had 1.1 C3, 1.1 C2. We talked about those. Where does the, where, where do we see the DA provision that provides for the multi-use pathway reflected in these findings?
So in, um, 1.1 J, the applicant shall provide a 10 foot wide detached multi-use pathway parallel to the east west collector road within a 14 foot wide easement 10 foot pathway and two foot shoulder each side. Then the street section. I'm going to find that.
And just to confirm that totally complies with the request from the, I guess, public works department in terms of what they were looking for, I assume.
Okay, street section is attached as exhibit A. But we may need some verbiage to incorporate that.
Sorry, did you repeat that?
Street, the street section is attached as exhibit A to the back of the proposed findings. Oh, excuse me. I just found it. It's in 1.1 C4. When required to be constructed, the east west collector shall be constructed in conformity with the street section designed attached as exhibit A.
Then, um, consistent with, okay, with then we have exceptions. So Caleb, do we have any issues with these exceptions under 1.1 D1 and 2?
Council President, um, and Councilwoman, uh, Schrader. So D1 is, we kind of talked about above in 1.1 C1. So there, there is some repetitiveness to some of that. So, um, yeah, we're still talking about when design review basically applies to what building facades. So.
So if there was an inclusion of the, if there was an inclusion of facades facing the north side, that would be included here. If it were to come in to pass, okay. All right. Put a little star next to that. Okay. I'm assuming we, we don't have any issues with the process in terms of CCC. And they've accepted TIS. I think that that should all be fine. Okay, maybe we go to the drain. Yeah. Okay. So we like to leave the drains open if they're not a safety hazard. It's great to recharge the groundwater. Don't yet know exactly what the use will be to the north. Are you guys going to put up a fence? What's the plan around the drain?
We do not currently have a, a fence plan there. As, as Caleb noted, it didn't appear to be a, a safety issue. Um, we do have a significant setback from it. Um, the Napa Meridian irrigation district does have a maintenance road along the south side of the drain. Um, that is on our property. And then we have an additional buffer back from that. So, um, our first improvement, which is parking, so it's even further setback is 35 feet from the drain. So we've got a significant distance there, no residential use, nothing that would create somebody to go toward the drain or need to. So it's.
Kind of right. It's halfway on your property, halfway on another property. I guess what I'm sort of wonder, personally think piping it would be great, but I understand the advantages to not piping it for the city overall. I guess I'm wondering, are you willing to put a fence on your side? Because then I think that would be the standard I would expect from the property owner to the north.
Yes, we can agree to that.
Mr. Mayor? I'm looking to look around a little bit on that.
Councilwoman Pro.
So this is a drain, right? So this is not a canal. I don't know. I assume there's a, that there's not consistently running water going through this. So I think we, you know, we had had, we had, had talked about another development had brought up this concern about, you know, do we require fencing on canals with active running water, drains different. I think, I thought we had kind of come to the conclusion that fencing on drains isn't necessary. I know Napa Meridian doesn't like them. But I'm curious if Caleb could refresh our memory on that.
So, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilwoman Pro, I don't know that I can refresh your memory, uh, because I don't recall the conversation myself. I can only tell you what the code says and, and it is a case by case basis. Maybe a little bit of context. I mean, historically, this council, and I believe past councils, when it's, when it's proven that it's a 36 inch diameter pipe or more, the cost benefit seems to go way down. So I don't know what it would take to, to pipe this, but historically that's kind of been a factor anyways for previous councils to grant that waiver is if it takes a really large pipe. Historically, that's, that's been granted. And there's been other cases as well. But again, the standard is what I put in the memo that unless you waive it, for whatever reason you determine appropriate, the standard is to general, now that doesn't apply to creeks and some of those other waterways that we want to keep open and use as amenity, but the Rosenloft is not called out as one of those.
Mr. Mayor? My recollection is with, when it comes to drains, that, uh, that description fits. It's not a canal. It drags drain and during irrigation season, it may have more water. But typically a drain does that. It drains groundwater and the other water that's coming into that to, to run off. So typically they're often kept open. And, and the easement, uh, I looked at the letter from Napa Meridian and of course this easement, protect easement, that sort of thing. But typically a lot of the subdivisions put their walking paths along the drain and they may slope it down, put in rock, that sort of thing. And, and, and use it that way. This being a different type of site, but, uh, you know, I'd want clarification on Napa Meridian specifically for, for the drain.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, if I can, just maybe piggyback on those comments. And again, this, this is just annexation, not a subdivision with, but with our subdivision improvements, that is typically one of the options is to make it amenity then. If you're going to leave it open, then make it something that is attractive and doesn't become a nuisance. And we don't, we're not opposed to the fence. If that's where you all want to go. But that doesn't really look nice either to just have this, you know, a fenced off channel, uh, there necessarily either. So again, historically, that is something where I'm not saying we need to change the slopes to be three to one and all that, but typically there is some improvement of it at least then that, that just doesn't become weeds.
And no issue. I was only reacting to, I thought I saw that it was 12 feet. Is that accurate?
That's correct. It's 30 feet wide and 12 feet deep. So it's significant size. Um, and it does not run year round. So Councilmember Pro, you're correct. It is a drain. It is not open all the time. So I mean, it would be our preference not to put a fence there and block it off for the view from employees, but, um, that's, if that's required, we would accept that.
Okay. I don't know. I'm looking around, maybe to open vision fence, but if I'm the only one, I always get hung up about these. And then Council President Hoagland looks at me because he knows they're not a big deal. So I apologize. If it's not a big deal, I will move on. I'm gonna look at you. It's 12 feet deep though. I mean.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Hoagland, Councilwoman Schrader, yes, I'm very familiar. On my father-in-law's farm, it was 12 feet deep and that's where we'd go and jump the ducks just before sunset and walk back and, uh, have duck for dinner. So, and what they did when that property developed, you know, they backed it off, opened it up, uh, made a nice slope and, and landscape and did all those sorts of things and makes a nice walking path. So, but again, that's for, for a subdivision. It's a little different with industrial site, but, uh, I, I am just kind of in my mind remembering, I think for drains, Napa Meridian does not like fencing along. We do have easement along there, but I think it's different than canals where they, they want the easement, but you can put fencing in as long as they have their, their, their property area. But I, that's why I'd like to make sure with Napa Meridian that where that, that is accurate.
Okay. Councilmember Hoagland, we would not be able to put a fence within their easement, to be clear. It would have to be on our property. And I mean, they, they do use that maintenance road. They dredge it every two to three years and pull out the, the silt et cetera at the bottom. So it is a maintained, um, kind of constantly operated facility. And it is deep enough to intersect the groundwater there. So it is an impact on groundwater to pipe it.
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Schrader, if you don't, just, just to bring it back to full circle, while I, my concern isn't necessarily for safety. And I'm not going to say it's safe or unsafe because I can't make statements like that. But again, my concern, I hear with the applicant saying, you know, east west collectors get people to the collectors. But there's a future signal on this site and I would like properties to the north be able to have access to that without having to go a half mile back down and around to get to a signal. If they want to continue south and not use the arterial. So that's really why I bring up. And I'm not advocating for it to be fully piped, but if not, is there going to be a bridge or something that, not to all six properties, but somewhere in the half mile, some decent access to, for the future that we can, again, not have the UPS driver. for the future that we can, again, not have the UPS driver has to go all the way around, you know, and it's just things like that where we don't want to send them out to the arterial and all the way back to the west another half mile to get back between these two projects that have the same comp plan designation, but for this, this drain, if we leave it open. So I won't beat that anymore, but that's really what, I just want to make sure you're aware of that with whatever you do, that the likelihood then of having any vehicular connection to any of the six or seven properties to the north, direct, indirect, yeah, with the collector network, but directly probably will never happen. So.
What do you think, Deb?
Well, I'll offer a few comments and clients can jump in and see what they say. So. Yeah, the, the north-south local street was discussed pretty early on with staff and it was actually, we brought it up in one of our earlier hearings. ACHD doesn't support a local street going north-south there because they do want everything to go funnel over to the collectors. You know, that, that property does have access both to funnel, again, on their east-west collector. So just like our site has to construct an east-west collector through the middle, the properties to the north also do. And so they will have the same opportunity to access the north-south collector as we do, which works well. Funneling an unknown user's traffic into our, our site is, I guess, hard to say that that works for us or doesn't work for us yet. You know, if it, if it had to be designed that way and that were approved by ACHD, you know, when that site develops, then, you know, they, we do have, you can see in our site design, we do have our drive aisles run north-south. So, you know, they would have that opportunity if that were appropriate at that time.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the tough thing is like, this is what we expect from everybody. Like, we expect every single applicant to like have connectivity to the next property. It's, it's hard. I'm, I don't know. Anyway, maybe we'll put a pin in it. I see a big one. So the next big one that I see is really the timing of the east-west collector extending all the way to the western boundary. So I think there's a real question that staff is raising of, when should that take place? Should that take place immediately or should that take place after 960,000 square feet?
So we did add language to try to address this. And that is in 1.1 H2.
Mm-hmm.
So, because that's where the language had been about the east-west collector. So we just added additional language that, so the east-west collector is expanding through the site as the project progresses, right, to serve our development, just like it normally would. But we added that, so with the, excuse me, I'll just start at the beginning of the sentence. The east-west, east-west collector must be extended to the western boundary of the site as the development progresses to the western end of the site. Or, this is the new language, or at such time as the property to west constructs a connecting street, whichever is sooner. So if there is somebody who needs to be connected, we would have to expedite that timing, even if we were not out developing the western end of the property at that time. So that was our attempt to try to address that concern, to make sure that we are not a holdup ever. We would norm, develop it as we normally progress, but then extend it out as soon as there is a need to connect to that road.
Caleb, what do you think about that?
So Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, I really do appreciate the intent of, of the condition. And I feel like I'm a broken record here a little bit tonight. It is. So that project comes in and stubs, so do I call somebody and say, hey, they built the road. Now you have 10 days, a year, three years to construct your connection? I mean, there's nothing, there's no real trigger or it's, it's just the logistics of how we make that happen. And again, the, the intent, I think, is there and I love it. It's just when it comes to brass, what do I, how do, what do I hold and say, until you do this, I got your building permitted, or I got your occupancy? Or is it within, when ACHD accepts that road? Is it when council requires the stub street? It's just some of the nuances to that language. Again, I love the intent, just we're going to get there and they're going to say, well, it just says that we have to do it at such time the property west constructs theirs and it's still under construction. And then is it, do they have six months? Do they have six years? Is it just tied to no more than 1.5 million, you know, so I. And I don't know the answer there. Again, I appreciate the, the language, just it needs to be clear.
That's a great point. Deb, what about a timeline like? That you will complete that road improvement within three months of the stub street connecting to the western boundary?
Councilmember Strater, we're discussing. So I guess our vision of how the city has a lot of hooks because build out, and this is just one of the earlier phases. So we feel like there's a lot of opportunities to, to flag this. But if, if they want, you know, if the city or the adjoining developer wanted to give us notice, that would be one way to trigger it in addition to having all of the permitting throughout the entire larger development. And, but then if we're not very close, we would need to get, you know, over there. So we need 12 months probably. But I mean, that's part of why we tried to be very specific with it. Once they have a connecting street, we don't want them to just say, hey, we want a future road. It should be like timed with appropriate development, I guess, is what we're trying to accomplish, but.
I mean, it doesn't take that long to make a road. I hope. I mean, I don't know. You're looking at me, but I mean, 12 months is a long time, Deb. What if it's three months from the time that, three months from notice from staff? Would that, would that work?
I don't think they're comfortable that they can design and build a three-lane collector in three months.
Okay, so how long would it take?
I hear, I hear murmuring respect.
Okay, so you guys talk about that.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can, Councilwoman Strater and the, and the rest of council, I guess, not trying to require, you know, dollars that, that aren't needed now. I mean, I don't want to build the road to nowhere necessarily. But when the Assamundi property comes in, I envision a similar condition for them that with phase one, you take this collector and you get it up to Franklin. And then you've got the backbone to the whole transportation network. That's really the intent is that now we solve a lot of the problems or at least address some of the problems on black cat not being sufficient. And if we get the road stub there with phase one to that property and then require Assamundi to take it, pick it up and bring it to Franklin, you got the backbone to the entire transportation network in this section. At least that's the thought process with staff, not, oh, we got to wait for ACHD to say they've accepted a stub street. No, we have to call an applicant that may not, yeah, anyways.
I get you. I get you 100%. I mean, that's really, the issue is if it's not that workable, really what I was leaning toward initially was this just needs to go as part of your initial phase. Just extending that collector to the western boundary just removes the issue. Then you have a collector, then we don't have these issues of traffic. I mean, that, that would be, I think, everyone's preference is just build the, build a collector. You've already got one big tenant, so you know this thing is going to work. I don't know, just build the collector all the way to the western boundary. You know what I mean?
What if we bonded instead? Here's my concern, and I've watched this all over the country, is you're going to end up with a drag strip right there. You're going to have a building with half a mile straight long road with nothing at the end of it. And. I just, we're happy to be financially responsible for it if that's your concern. If your real concern is we need to make sure it gets built. But to build a road to connect to nothing when there is no development next door to it.
Sounds like it's pretty likely there will be though. And everybody's really worried about, you know, we've all been worried about this traffic. It's not a new issue.
We, we can bond it.
Well, you're going to bond it, but when is it going to get done? I think that's really the bigger.
And maybe it's six months of notice.
Just, are there several more issues that we suddenly go through?
No, I think we're almost through.
Because I'm wondering, we were going to take a break as soon as we were done. I don't know if any other council members have any other questions, the applicant, but maybe there's some of these you could talk about offline during a break. Councilwoman Strater, I don't know if there's anything else you need to put out there for them to consider? Then we take a break, discuss them, and we come back and hear from the community as well as the applicant.
Totally fair. Yeah. And I apologize for hogging the mic. It's been a pain. But I feel like this is the only way to figure this out because we have all these detailed conditions and it's hard to know what we're considering approving. But this is the last one that I have, Caleb. You'll tell me during the break if I'm missing something. Is you have now this three-acre parcel that's not part of the development. I think there's a real question about how is that going to access the arterial and that stuff? So think about that, maybe addressing that.
I, I can respond to that now. I'm sorry, I failed to remember that comment during my presentation. Yes, we will provide access to that property and make sure that they have access through our site.
Where is that, Deb, in the findings?
That's a new comment that we just heard from Caleb this evening and I meant to respond to it.
Okay, so that needs to be added. Okay, that needs to be added. Okay. I am so sorry, Mr. Mayor. I'm done with whatever this was.
No, no reason to apologize. Are there any, this council have any other questions for the applicant at this time they'd like to inquire?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I do have questions about those categories that are set aside with the square footage designations, but I can wait until after the break. Maybe.
Okay, let's go and take a 15-minute break. And hopefully I'll give you time to work through some of these conversations, come back and potentially have some more conversation. Okay, so reconvene at 8:45 or in some people's cases, 10:45? If you're, I don't know what time zone, I think it's just one hour difference, so.
I'm still in Mountain Time, folks. We're doing great.
Okay, thanks, Councilman. Would the applicant like to come back up and make any comments to the items that were discussed? And there may be some additional questions from council and pro or others. I'm not going to only have to look that easy, so.
Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for the opportunity to go through the conditions in detail. That's been a long project, and we really appreciate that attention to detail to get it right. So on the questions that have been raised along the north facade, we can accept the 15% window frontage on average, the same as what we proposed for the I-84. On the drain issue, you know, we'd prefer not to build the fence, but we're agreeable to that if that had to happen. Looking at the connectivity issue that was discussed and talking with the traffic engineer and kind of thinking about how things are actually going to flow, it actually doesn't seem very likely the property to our north is going to need any connection to our property because they, as we mentioned, have the east-west collector going through from Black Cat to the north-south collector. And all the traffic is going to go up to the north and out to the interstate and intersections anyway. So it seems more likely that they would be burdened by our traffic as opposed to benefiting from it. So we just continue to ask that that connection not be planned at this time. We don't know what that use is. We do have an appropriate funnel for our traffic to accommodate it, and they will also. On the extension of east-west collector, we can live with the three months, 90 days, if you just want to be very precise. We just need to time it from the end of the availability of that connecting street. So then we can watch the permits and the construction and see the sewer getting extended. We'll have lots of notice to be able to do the work we need to do to be able to connect to it. So that gives you a specific trigger and a specific tight timeline. So if we do 90 days within completion of that connecting street, we can make that work. And I think those were the things we were huddling about.
Counsel, any questions or additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
So prior to the meeting, I was reading through your three categories to define when all of these road improvements will be complete in relationship to staff's comments in relationship to the ACHD letter from the middle of July. And ACHD letter states on page two that the traffic impact study included two scenarios, one with a north-south collector intersecting Franklin and one without. And you're proposing that it does not connect with Franklin at this time, that that's an off-site improvement. But the study shows without the construction of the collector roadway that this segment of Black Cat Road is proposed to exceed ACHD's acceptable level of service planning thresholds for a two- and three-lane minor arterial in the PM peak hours under the 20-30 total traffic conditions. And then it talks about this segment is listed in ACHD's capital improvements plan to be widened to five lanes between 2036 and 2040. Can you give some clarity to us on whether that timeframe is accurate? You're stating that you have picked up the, that you've picked up the right-of-way to be able to make those improvements yourself and that you're looking at creating a contract agreement with, complete those in advance with ACHD. Is that what I'm understanding, or am I confusing two totally separate sections? I'm talking about the section between the collector and Franklin on Black Cat.
Mayor, Councilmember Pro, I think I understand what you're saying. So what we're proposing is that, and it is consistent with the trigger that's in the TIS and what's described here in ACHD's letter, is that above 960,000 square feet of occupied space within our development is when that triggers an impact on the level of service at Black Cat, when you don't have the north-south collector anymore. So then you're triggered at that point. And so we have accepted a cap on going above that level of occupancy until Black Cat is widened. Then to help further that, because it's in our interest now too, because now we're capped at that amount, and to further the road improvements, we've agreed and pursued some efforts to try to bring that forward. And so one of the things we've done is gone out and secured the right-of-way. You probably remember from prior hearings, that's been the problem. You know, that's why we are trying to look at other alternatives, because we could not get all the right-of-way, and so, and that wasn't available. So that's the big effort that's happened, is to go secure all that right-of-way. So that really does enable that to happen sooner. And ACHD has agreed that they will buy that right-of-way and have set that process in motion. So that is progressing. As to the cooperative development agreement, if we can pursue that as a further means of expediting that, then the applicant has said that they will do that. And ACHD has moved from "no, we won't" to "we'll look at it at the time and check our resources." So they became willing to consider it based on the availability of staff.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
But it's possible, at this point, their capital improvement plan still shows between 2036 and 2040, and nothing official has happened to change that potential timeline. And so we could potentially be seeing a time lapse between this first 960,000 square feet and when you start the second phase, it could be a significant amount of time between those two if Black Cat doesn't get widened because either they won't agree to the cooperative development agreement or they choose to delay it in their capital improvements plan. Is that what I'm understanding?
Mayor, Councilmember Pro, that's correct. That's why we've taken that cap onto ourselves. We don't believe that's the likely timeline now that the other roadways have been expedited and based on discussions that we've had with ACHD where they're going ahead and acquiring the right-of-way. But you're right, and that's why we've capped our development to not be able to proceed rather than just saying, "it seems like it's happening faster," right? So we've just limited ourselves. But we also do believe, and especially with acquiring the right-of-way, that it is happening faster. And so that gives us comfort that we're not going to be capped at that, you know, for very long, if at all. If that made those road improvements, we believe are just going to happen in due course.
Counsel, any questions or additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
So prior to the meeting, I was reading through your three categories to define when all of these road improvements will be complete in relationship to staff's comments in relationship to the ACHD letter from the middle of July. And ACHD letter states on page two that the traffic impact study included two scenarios, one with a north-south collector intersecting Franklin and one without. And you're proposing that it does not connect with Franklin at this time, that that's an off-site improvement. But the study shows without the construction of the collector roadway that this segment of Black Cat Road is proposed to exceed ACHD's acceptable level of service planning thresholds for a two- and three-lane minor arterial in the PM peak hours under the 20-30 total traffic conditions. And then it talks about this segment is listed in ACHD's capital improvements plan to be widened to five lanes between 2036 and 2040. Can you give some clarity to us on whether that timeframe is accurate? You're stating that you have picked up the, that you've picked up the right-of-way to be able to make those improvements yourself and that you're looking at creating a contract agreement with, complete those in advance with ACHD. Is that what I'm understanding, or am I confusing two totally separate sections? I'm talking about the section between the collector and Franklin on Black Cat.
Mayor, Councilmember Pro, I think I understand what you're saying. So what we're proposing is that, and it is consistent with the trigger that's in the TIS and what's described here in ACHD's letter, is that above 960,000 square feet of occupied space within our development is when that triggers an impact on the level of service at Black Cat, when you don't have the north-south collector anymore. So then you're triggered at that point. And so we have accepted a cap on going above that level of occupancy until Black Cat is widened. Then to help further that, because it's in our interest now too, because now we're capped at that amount, and to further the road improvements, we've agreed and pursued some efforts to try to bring that forward. And so one of the things we've done is gone out and secured the right-of-way. You probably remember from prior hearings, that's been the problem. You know, that's why we are trying to look at other alternatives, because we could not get all the right-of-way, and so, and that wasn't available. So that's the big effort that's happened, is to go secure all that right-of-way. So that really does enable that to happen sooner. And ACHD has agreed that they will buy that right-of-way and have set that process in motion. So that is progressing. As to the cooperative development agreement, if we can pursue that as a further means of expediting that, then the applicant has said that they will do that. And ACHD has moved from "no, we won't" to "we'll look at it at the time and check our resources." So they became willing to consider it based on the availability of staff.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
But it's possible, at this point, their capital improvement plan still shows between 2036 and 2040, and nothing official has happened to change that potential timeline. And so we could potentially be seeing a time lapse between this first 960,000 square feet and when you start the second phase, it could be a significant amount of time between those two if Black Cat doesn't get widened because either they won't agree to the cooperative development agreement or they choose to delay it in their capital improvements plan. Is that what I'm understanding?
Mayor, Councilmember Pro, that's correct. That's why we've taken that cap onto ourselves. We don't believe that's the likely timeline now that the other roadways have been expedited and based on discussions that we've had with ACHD where they're going ahead and acquiring the right-of-way. But you're right, and that's why we've capped our development to not be able to proceed rather than just saying, "it seems like it's happening faster," right? So we've just limited ourselves. But we also do believe, and especially with acquiring the right-of-way, that it is happening faster. And so that gives us comfort that we're not going to be capped at that, you know, for very long, if at all. If that made those road improvements, we believe are just going to happen in due course.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we have one person signed in, Kayla Rich.
If there's anybody online that'd like to provide testimony, please use the raise-your-hand feature so we will know to bring you in at the appropriate time. If you say your name and address for the record.
My name is Kayla Rich, and my address is 745 South Black Cat Road. And Mr. Mayor and council members, I would benefit for this development to go through. I'm a property owner that is in the proposed area. But as a citizen of Meridian, I think I'm one of, what, fast approaching 150,000 citizens that would benefit from a development like this as well. I want to commend the mayor, the council members, and also the staff for being so diligent in wielding the resources that are going away, which is land. And since we are being locked in by all the cities around us, to be able to take these resources and curate an area that's going to allow us to live, work, and raise our families in the way that this council has foreseen, but also the previous councils as well. I don't think any citizen having followed this development path would ever accuse any member of the city staff or the council or the mayor of not doing their due diligence. Making sure that developers don't just plunder the spoils of this city's success, but proportionately contribute to the future success of our city. And that's what I see from this development, the applicant's proposal. The applicant has done extensive efforts to mold a common vision for this development based on the input from staff and council members. It reminds me a little bit of The Incredibles, Elastigirl Mom. "I'll do this over here, and we'll get this here, and I'll get the fence. And if you can just approve it, we'll get this done," right? But I'm wondering how much more patience they have, because they have worked on changing facades, making sure that they've given you a, almost a choose-your-own-adventure style of, "where would you like us to improve the roads? We'll give you the money. Where would you like it? We'll make sure that we can improve and make better this area when we come in to develop here." One of the things that this applicant has done is provided for the traffic that is going to be increased by their project. But they've also worked to address what the mayor has asked for, which is, "what about the other traffic that's just going to be in that area? What are we going to do about the other traffic, not necessarily coming to your development?" One of the things that we have all been facing is this Highway 16 connection that's just been happening so quickly, and everybody's trying to catch up with the pace of growth that we've had. But it's being built, and people are coming. Whether or not this development gets approved, we will see an increase in traffic. But I think what's lovely about this, with this phased development that the applicant has proposed, is it takes that chicken-and-the-egg scenario and solves it. By doing it in phases and making sure that the development matches the traffic and addresses it in the phased approach, I don't think most developers would put all their front efforts and funding and say, "we'll only do this much until you're ready for more." So it's a little amazing to me that the applicant's willing to do it. I know one of the concerns in the past has been timing. I think that, again, if you build it, they're going to come. And then one last thing in the 10-mile plan. I just wanted to remind that when the 10-mile plan was written, there's a sentence in there that I think is really important to remember, that "the land use element has evolved as a continuum of land uses," this is in page 3-15, "that integrate and spill from one to another. Rather than delineating land into zones by function, the lines in this land use map are flexible. The line should adjust and evolve to create a place that's truly an integrative whole, mixing uses both vertically and horizontally." And it continues on to say that the lines should be relatively broad, and the exact shape of the land use areas need to be more conceptual, that it's not going to be literal to the plan. So if you were asked by any citizen in our community, you can say that you were taking into consideration the 10-mile plan when you approved this applicant's proposal for development, and you were forward-thinking for what our industry is moving towards, which is a little bit more industrial and less of that employment space. And I just urge you to approve this plan so they can move forward. A year's a long time. I know they've put a lot of effort into it, and I would like to see this council join their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Thank you. Is there, have anyone else signed? Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to come up and write testimony on this item at this time? And no one online raised their hand, but we'll ask again if there's anybody online that would like to provide testimony on this item at this time? And I'll invite the applicant.
Mr. Mayor. May I? I was waiting for the public to go first.
W Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
traffic conditions. And then it talks about this segment is listed in ACHD's capital improvements plan to be widened to five lanes between 2036 and 2040. Can you give some clarity to us on whether that timeframe is accurate? You're stating that you have picked up the, that you've picked up the right-of-way to be able to make those improvements yourself and that you're looking at creating a contract agreement with, complete those in advance with ACHD. Is that what I'm understanding? Or am I confusing two totally separate sections? I'm talking about the section between the Collector and Franklin on Black Cat.
Mayor, Councilmember Pro, I think I understand what you're saying. So what we're proposing is that, and is consistent with the trigger that's in the TIS and what's described here in ACHD's letter, is that above 960,000 square feet of occupied space within our development is when that triggers an impact on the level of service at Black Cat, when you don't have the North-South Collector anymore. So then you're triggered at that point. And so we have accepted a cap on going above that level of occupancy until Black Cat is widened. Then to help further that, because it's in our interest now too, because now we're capped at that amount, and to further the road improvements, we've agreed and pursued some efforts to try to bring that forward. And so one of the things we've done is gone out and secured the right-of-way. You probably remember from prior hearings, that's been the problem. You know, that's why we were trying to look at other alternatives, because we could not get all the right-of-way and so, and that wasn't available. So that's the big effort that's happened, is to go secure all that right-of-way. So that really does enable that to happen sooner. And ACHD has agreed that they will buy that right-of-way and have set that process in motion. So that is progressing. As to the cooperative development agreement, if we can pursue that as a further means of expediting that, then the applicant has said that they will do that. And ACHD has moved from "no, we won't" to "we'll look at it at the time and see, check our resources." So they became willing to consider it based on the availability of staff.
Mr. Mayor. But it's possible, but at this point, their capital improvement plan still shows between 2036 and 2040, and nothing official has happened to change that potential timeline. And so we could potentially be seeing a time lapse between these, this first 960,000 square feet and, and when you start the second phase, that it could be a significant amount of time between those two if Black Cat doesn't get widened, because either they won't agree to the cooperative development agreement, or they choose to delay it in their capital improvements plan. Is that what I'm understanding?
Mayor, Councilmember Pro, that's correct. That's why we've taken that cap onto ourselves. We don't believe that's the likely timeline, now that the other roadways have been expedited and based on discussions that we've had with ACHD where they're going ahead and acquiring the right-of-way. But you're right, and that's why we've capped our development to not be able to proceed, rather than just saying, "it seems like it's happening faster." Right? So we've just limited ourselves, but, but we also do believe, and especially with acquiring the right-of-way, that it is happening faster. And so that gives us comfort that we're not going to be capped at that, you know, for very long, if at all. If that made those road improvements, we believe are just going to happen in due course.
Okay.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we have one person signed in, Kayla Rich.
If there's anybody online that'd like to provide testimony, please use the raise-your-hand feature, so we will know to bring you in at the appropriate time. If you can say your name and address for the record.
My name is Kayla Rich and my address is 745 South Black Cat Road. And Mr. Mayor and council members, I would benefit for this development to go through. I'm a property owner that is in the proposed area. But as a citizen of Meridian, I think I'm one of, what, fast approaching 150,000 citizens that would benefit from a development like this as well. I want to commend the mayor, the council members, and also the staff for being so diligent in wielding the resources that are, that are going away, which is land. And as, since we are being locked in by all the cities around us, to be able to take these resources and curate an area that's going to allow us to live, work, and raise our families in the way that this council has foreseen, but also the previous councils as well. I don't think any citizen, having followed this development path, would ever accuse any member of the city staff, or the council, or the mayor of not doing their due diligence. Making sure that developers don't just plunder the spoils of this city's success, but to proportionately contribute to the future success of our city. And that's what I see from this development, the applicant's proposal. The applicant has done extensive efforts to mold a common vision for this development based on the input from staff and council members. Reminds me a little bit of The Incredibles' Elastigirl mom. "I'll do this over here, and we'll get this here, and I'll get the fence, and if you can just approve it, we'll get this done," right? But I'm wondering how much more patience they have, because they have worked on changing facades, making sure that they've given you a, almost a choose-your-own-adventure style of, "where would you like us to improve the roads? We'll give you the money. Where would you like it? We'll make sure that we can improve and make better this area when we come in to develop here." One of the things that this applicant has done is provided for the traffic that is going to be increased by their project. But they've also worked to address what the mayor has asked for, which is, "what about the other traffic that's just going to be in that area? What are we going to do about the other traffic, not necessarily coming to your development?" One of the things that we have all been facing is this Highway 16 connection that's just been happening so quickly, and everybody's trying to catch up with the pace of growth that we've had. But it's being built, and people are coming. Whether or not this development gets approved, we will see an increase in traffic. But I think what's lovely about this, with this phased development that the applicant has proposed, is it's, it takes that chicken-and-the-egg scenario and solves it. By doing it in phases and making sure that the development matches the, the traffic and, and addresses it in the phase approach, I don't think most developers would put all their front efforts and funding and say, "we'll only do this much until you're ready for more." So it's, it's a little amazing to me that the applicant's willing to do it. I know one of the concerns in the past has been timing. I think this, again, if you build it, they're going to come. And then one last thing, in the 10-mile plan, I just wanted to remind that when the 10-mile plan was written, there's a, there's a sentence in there that I think is really important to remember, that "the land use element has evolved as a continuum of land uses," this is in page 3-15, "that integrate and spill from one to another. Rather than delineating land into zones by function, the lines in this land use map are flexible. The line should adjust and evolve to create a place that's truly an integrative whole, mixing uses both vertically and horizontally." And it continues on to say that the lines should be relatively broad, and the exact shape of the land use areas need to be more conceptual, that it's not going to be literal to the plan. So if you were asked by any citizen in our community, you can say that you were taking into consideration the 10-mile plan when you approved this applicant's proposal for development, and you were forward-thinking for what our industry is moving towards, which is a little bit more industrial and less of that employment space. And I just urge you to approve this plan so they can move forward. A year's a long time. I know they've put a lot of effort into it, and I would like to see this council join their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Thank you. Is there, have you no one else signed? Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to come up and write testimony on this item at this time? And no one online raised their hand, but we'll ask again if there's anybody online that would like to provide testimony on this item at this time? And I'll invite the applicant.
Mr. Mayor. Mayor. I was waiting for the public to go first.
Deputy Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Great, great conversations tonight. I just want to make sure we dial this back down to the bare bones. This, this project is in no man's land for us. We, we can't get there in five minutes. We can't get there, we can get there in maybe seven minutes, and that's the first due. So I just want to make sure, basically from Zimmerman Lane out, which includes Compass School, we, we can't get there. We can, but it's time. So if anything gets built, we can get there, but it's going to be how long? And if we're talking 2 million square feet or a million and a half square feet, as the risk reduction person for the city, as the fire marshal, we're generating this huge amount of risk by having square footage and people and no resources available nearby to support the project. So I just wanted to make sure that we bring it back down to the reality is, we don't have a fire station out here. We are currently trying to find land out in this area, but right now, nothing is available. And it, it's going to be a stretch for us to get out here, even with Station 8. Station 8 will be roughly six minutes away. So you'll have 8 and 2 are going to be the closest. The truck company is roughly about seven or eight minutes out, nine minutes out. And if you have a 300,000-square-foot building on fire with 400 people on it, that's going to take a lot of resources. The next closest would be Nampa. Nampa's about eight minutes away. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, that we can support it. You know, it's like somebody just said, "build it and they will come. Build it, we'll come." But it's just going to be a matter of what that response time's going to look like.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pro.
Thank you, Chief. So I assume that this would require the ladder truck because of the height? So is that, those distances and times you gave us with, with the ladder truck, or is that just nearest station?
Sorry. Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Pro, the, the six to seven minutes, that's, that's stations. I thought I had it up here real quick. Give me just a second, and I can tell you what, roughly, Station 1 is away. Because yes, it will require a ladder truck. So currently, again, this is just using Google Maps, there's nothing scientific to Google. That puts it roughly about seven minutes away. And then if we do put the new ladder truck that we have on order, if it gets placed at Station 6, it'll roughly be about the same amount of time, six to seven minutes away.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Curious if you've worked with the applicant in terms of mitigating factors. So I don't know if these are stick-built or what the materials are, but they're industrial buildings. I can't imagine that they're... But are there things you recommend that people do, like put in sprinklers or something for a building of this size?
Oh, definitely. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, with something like that, the, the fire code and the building code are going to require sprinkler systems for them. I'm not sure if they're doing tilt-up. We never discussed what the buildings are going to be made out of. But the fire code and the building code will dictate sprinkler systems. I did put in there as a comment that they're most likely going to need fire pumps because of the size of the buildings that they're putting in. So again, that's, that's kind of down the lane when we get to the actual building. All that will be determined by the fire code and the building code.
Counsel, any additional questions for the deputy chief?
Okay.
Then will the applicant like to come up, frame final comments and close?
Mayor, members of the council. So just a couple of quick comments to respond to, to Joe there. And in particular, to respond to your question, Councilmember Schrader, yes, we, we did work with, with fire on this. Looking back to October 19th, 2021, communication with Joe about this, saying that yes, we, this is from Joe, "we can support the project. We may have extended response times to get there at this time. Station 6 on a good day is about six minutes away." So that was discussed. We knew that, still got their support. We've got, we do have sprinklers in the buildings, and they are concrete. And I know from other residential projects I've worked on with, with Joe and his team that, you know, when you are further out of that five minutes, that's when they start looking at those sprinklers. So I think that is part of why everybody got comfortable with it, is the building materials, and they will be fully sprinkled. And, and, and he did disclose that timeframe. So we're comfortable with that. Appreciate, sorry.
Councilwoman Borton.
I apologize, just because it's the point you just made. Is there a distinction in, in, I'd like, I'd like to ask Deputy Chief on the word "support" versus "serve"? When you reference that we can support it, I think from your perspective, are you meaning we can serve it? Because of course you could serve it.
We can serve it.
They'll serve anything, though.
Yeah, Mr., sorry, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Borton, when it comes down to, I mean, we're, we're one of those ones that if you build it, we'll be there.
Right.
It's just, for us, it's that, how long is it going to be there?
But.
I mean, I, I, in my seven years that I've been the fire marshal, I've never, I, I think only once or twice, I've, I'm like, "man, we really can't support you with this project." Because we can, but it, for us, it's just, what's the response time going to look like? And, and this is totally, we're, we're in no man's land out here.
So is there, is there any distinction when using the word "support" versus "serve" in this context? Like support, like I want this project approved, or we can serve it? We can accomplish our task?
We can, we can serve it.
Okay.
I mean, honestly, we need a, we need another fire station out there to support the growth that's to serve, however you want to say it, what's going on out in this area? Because this is going to be the next hotbed, is, as that development is coming from Eagle Road going this direction, we have been actively looking for land out here, because we know Laren has a project that he wants to build. The Eggers property has been brought forth for development, and, and I told them, I'm like, "we, we really can't get there. I mean, you can build it, but if council approves it, we don't know how long it's going to take us to get there, because they're all the way up against the freeway." So for us, you know, there is no freeway access. We have to go all the way around to get to it. So that's, that's the big problem with, with Black Cat.
Councilwoman Borton.
That's how I read your language. The, the lawyer-y of it was that you meant you could serve it, which is different to me than we can support it.
And I, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Borton, I will agree with you. Yeah.
And maybe just to put a finer point on this conversation, Chief, what percentage of our calls are for fires?
Oh, well, lately, it's been kind of high.
I know. I, I think.
Yeah, no, we're eight to 10%, roughly.
Ninety.
Maybe a little higher.
Ninety percent likelihood that your response will be for a healthcare-related incident at this facility, more so than a fire-related incident.
Or depending on the, the type of building, it could be sometime from an industrial something or other. I mean, because if you look at fiber on, we're there 14, 15 times a, a year, and a lot of those are fires. But it, I don't know what they're putting in there, so I can't really go, "yeah, we'll never be there." Bye.
So the five-minute response time, well, fire and healthcare, just... Okay. All right.
Sorry.
No problem. And Mayor, to that end, we can also install defibrillators and that kind of, you know, onsite remedy as well as is appropriate in a workplace. So I, I think we've, we've tried to address all your questions. They've been good ones. Thank you for getting into the details. We really appreciate the direction at the last meeting to propose the conditions of approval, so that we can go through this exercise. So thank you. And we, we feel that we have tried to work through all of your questions and concerns about the, the main point, so that we can bring you this 2 million square feet of needed industrial, and ask for your support of the project with the conditions that have been proposed and modified this evening.
Thank you. Counsel, additional questions for the applicant, comments? Or have a seat, and we'll see if there's a further dialogue.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Borton.
Question back to Caleb. With the sequence, I understand it correct, that these conditions of approval we've been talking about, are conditions that were initially crafted, drafted by the applicant to us, proactively, trying to get the dialogue going, which I appreciate. We responded that April 3rd or August 3rd memorandum. Is that the, the totality of the exchange, other than tonight, on the conditions? I mean, this, it's difficult to go in this sequence, but... And if so, in light of this conversation, your input's very important, and, and you think that each of these conditions has been discussed and vetted, or are there more things that you think, counsel, you need to consider when I look at these proposed conditions? I, I recommend you look at 7, 8, 12, and 14.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Borton, it's, it's a good question, and a bit unfair, quite frankly, because Allen was the planner, so to say it was, is comprehensive, there's been other conversations that I haven't been a part of. But that said, you know, I, I'm pretty confident in what you have before you with the commentary, with the discussion tonight, and some of the notes that are, you know, in the record, that a lot of them are, a lot of the issues were at least raised. But that said, just as an example, we didn't quite get there before the break. 1.2 talks about the R15 zone property. And this isn't a huge issue necessarily, but I just want to bring it to your attention, that there are two pretty basic provisions in the development agreement that just say the house needs to hook up at 350 South Black Cat within 60 calendar days, pretty standard. And then that talks about, you know, use consistent with the uses and dimensional standards alone in the R15 zone. I can't remember the last time that council approved an annexation without a conceptual redevelopment plan for a property, R15, CC, CG, anything. I just don't recall it. Again, we're only talking about one acre, not, not a huge deal. But kind of to your question, staff originally analyzed this and said, "boy, at a high level, we don't think this is in the city's best interest, so stop short of then adding some other conditions that talk about, hey, any new construction on that site, modify the DA first and bring a concept back." Because what's worded right now, they can build some duplexes out there, and we couldn't say yea-nay or indifferent. It's just building permits and off you go. Have four access points to the arterial, because we don't have any code that applies. So just as an example, that, that parcel, and it's not, 130 acres is the big deal, it's just one acre. But just as an example, there are some things that haven't been fully vetted. I'm not trying to delay it, don't get me wrong, and I'm, I'm prepared right now. I mean, just even with that, we could add what I just said, say, "hey, that property, enjoy what you have now, but if you want to do anything else, you got to come back and modify your development agreement with a new concept plan. You're not entitled to develop with R15 uses. Daycare centers, townhouses, duplexes are not approved by right with this annexation, because you haven't submitted a concept plan." So again, you had multiple questions kind of in there. I'm pretty comfortable with where the discussion, and I think we've vetted a lot of these, these concerns out. I would, back to one of your last comments, I would like to, and I appreciate Ms. Nelson, you know, kind of running through those, where they're at, and, and back to you. Just so I'm clear, and if recommendation or the, the motion is to approve tonight, make sure we get it right for the findings and the conditions. I would like to read back to you what I heard and understand, and that way, there isn't, you know, too many iterations of this. And I, I don't think it'll take as much time as it did earlier. Just some clarifications on the 816 memo, if, if and when that's where you guys are at and want to do. I do have some, just want to make sure I heard everything correctly, and we document it as such.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
I'm not intending to interrupt Caleb, but I have a question before he goes through that process. So wouldn't it, considering that you didn't draft these conditions, the applicant did, which is kind of unique, would, would it not make sense for you to, for staff to have more time to really go through that in detail and bring us back potential conditions that add anything that may have been missed? I mean, you commented on the conditions that the applicant created, but you didn't set any of your own, and, and wouldn't it be better for us to just not? At this point, I, I would like to further explore staff's requests to change how these categories are set up and not do it by square footage, but rather do it by design review timeframes or CCC timeframes, and have the applicant go through that with staff and figure out that process versus the square footage before we even talk about the details of the DA provisions that they proposed.
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pro, I, I, and again, I, I'm not Allen and wasn't privy to potential conversations he had, but I have been enough involved with this, where I do know there were some back and forth, and the conditions you see now aren't what they look like back in April. So we have had some things, "hey, can you address this in your proposed conditions?" And in fact, we note that in a couple of these, "hey, this was added at the request of staff." And so we have had that. I haven't personally done that, but I, with some confidence, believe that Allen has. So I don't know the continuing it, so we can make sure that all the conditions are addressed. I think we're down to somewhat wordsmithing. I think most of the issues are on the table. And I don't know that a delay to make sure that every single T and I are caught, again, I somewhat trust that Allen did most of that exercise over the last few months. So again, this isn't, even the 816 version that you have tonight, there was three or four versions of this before, and they've added some things at our request and say, "hey, can you address this? Can you address that?" Is it worded how we'd prefer it now, but at least it's addressed to some degree?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I guess a general, just general question for Caleb and maybe for Bill. Wouldn't it make sense to, we'll decide where this goes, whether it's a general approval or a denial, just like with any project, we would list the additional conditions generally? And then I think we would have to see revised findings that would reflect that. Like, I don't think we would be approving the exact findings tonight. That feels a little clunky. I think we have, if we got there, if we get to an approval, I think we would have an idea, but I just saw Bill nod, so is that what you would recommend?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Schrader, that's normally been our course. When we've had a situation where the staff has recommended denial, P&amp;Z's recommended denial, I think Caleb's right. I don't know that the level of detail of, of, needs to go back to like square one. I think they have probably got this to a point that it is going to be crafting what the actual final findings look like, having the applicant review them, make sure they're in line with what their recollection and what their notes reflect. And so, but the staff is, like Caleb said, writing it and wordsmithing it the way that fits our template, our, our type, so that we're comfortable with it. Like Caleb said, a lot of it is going to be making sure we put in either triggers or some way to put some checkmarks in as to when things can happen and what is the consequence. I mean, one question I wasn't clear on was on that, and, and maybe we've cleared it up now. We talked about the road, and when the road would have to get extended, and we've discussed 60 days, six months, 90 days, whatever the number ends up being. And then what? If they don't, then what? I mean, that's kind of what I think planning gets sort of tasked with at the end. Okay, this says you have to have the road completed in 90 days or 180 days. Okay, and on day 181, then what, what do we do? Are we holding up other, is there other permits? Is that what's anticipated? So I think there's a little bit of that stuff, that planning usually nuances before you get the final one. So that's what I would suggest. And again, obviously, planning's going to craft this, so what Caleb's direction is, is probably the most critical, but that has been our norm, is that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I'm happy to kick off some discussion. We think it's time for some discussion. We will keep the public hearing open in case you have a question. Long process for you guys and for us. It's been a long process. This is a big development, important part of our city. I'm glad that that process has happened. And I know the continuances have been hard, but I think it has really improved what would happen here. Yeah, I'm strongly in support of this one. I don't think it's without its issues. But to me, this is really like the future of where the economy is going and a great use in Meridian for generating jobs. The truth is, you know, offices are, there's a lot of vacancy in the office product right now, but I don't just think that's for now. This working from home thing is not going to go away. COVID is not going to go away. I think having this type of industrial use that can benefit from the trends around manufacturing and the internet and all those things is a good thing. They've made a lot of changes. I appreciate that, especially acquiring all the right of way along Black Cat. I thought that was a significant change on their part. I appreciate that it's phased, you know, as they expand, they're going to comprehensively ensure that the road network gets updated. Understood and understanding there's no one forcing ACHD to do it. No one can guarantee that, but it's certainly in their best interest. I think if all this right of way is acquired and they seem more open in their letter to working with them on a development agreement. So, you know, with some conditions, a lot of conditions, I think along the lines of what we talked about, I'm supportive of this one. I think it's in our best interest.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
I think, I tend to agree. I really do. I think the timing has always been a challenge. Clearly the applicant's aware of that. I think the pros of what this brings and improvements up to today outweigh the difficulties that we have with the, its location and the, and the sequence of its onboarding into the city. For me procedurally, what I thought of as we went through this process and heard these remarks and discussion is if a project, if this project were to go forward, that, you know, a public hearing would be closed and we wouldn't necessarily have to take action on it. But, you know, with the direction of staff, with this discussion to provide the complete conditions of approval as amended tonight, to and including your recommendation with regards to the R15 lot and have the complete amended conditions of approval available for an official vote. If there's a general direction that the council will be supportive of, based upon what we heard tonight. To do that really right now might be difficult and we hate to create and approve specific language in that manner, but maybe if, if you could get a consensus from council to go that route, at least you'd be able to, to craft that language for an official act. I don't feel totally comfortable making a vote on it without seeing the exact wording of those conditions because this one's a little funky in the order, but I, but I am certainly supportive of what I've heard and what this project brings to Meridian. My two cents of how to act on it and proceed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I'm still a bit unclear on the purpose of just doing an annexation without, as Caleb mentioned, DA and a concept plan. What, what does that benefit the applicant to just be annexed and, and you know, not have those other elements? It is really unusual, at least I've probably only seen two or three applications that just for annexation that don't have anything else tied to it. So I'm, I'm just trying to really wrap my head around what the benefit would be to annex it, what the benefit would be to the city to annex it with, without any other guidelines included.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pro. I don't know that there's a huge benefit to the city to annex the one acre. However, it has to be part of the annexation because that's the path of contiguity if you want to annex the 130 acres. Cause that's again, the point of connection. So if the concept plan is no concept plan and their plan isn't to plan, that's okay too. I think we just need to document that here to say, you've got a single family home on there. Continue to have a single family home, R15. You can have a single family home in the city in R15, hook it up. You're good to go. If you want to do anything else though, you got to come back because you're not entitled to do any more than that. And that's just what isn't clear right now. So your question about, you know, is there a huge public benefit or not, not really. But it needs to be part of the application in your action or else the 130 acres is ineligible. So.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Holman. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the dialogue we've had and the attempt to make changes and trying to meet the situation that exists out there, expansion of roads, dealing with the traffic. Things that others have commented on and at past hearings and it has come a long ways. One of the things, you know, we talk about adhering to our comprehensive plan or the 10 mile plan, and that's always a good thing, but we, we are always also looking at what has changed that makes it so we can do different things or it's, it's okay to do something different. And, and to me, the game changer is the extension of Highway 16 that connects to the freeway. When, when you look at that, that design, it, it's going to be different than say 10 mile or Eagle Road and having those types of retail and service type things that are along those corridors. You have right in, right out, access is real close. You notice those long on ramp, on ramps, off ramps, and everything's going to take place there at, at that intersection at Franklin. And then those services are going to spread out. To me, it's, it's more akin of what we're seeing at where the Amazon facility is at, at Robinson Road and Franklin Road. It's, it's going to be a different type of thing. And to me, this, this facility, the IL zoning is appropriate for here. It, it makes it work. There are challenges, you know, we need that north connector to Franklin Road, but it's on property they don't control. But that can come in time when that property goes to develop. We can have those connections made. They handle what they could handle and that is the right of way on, on Black Cat Road. I, I, I think it will fit our 10 mile plan. It is some use that we envisioned as part of that. It is, I think Councilwoman Schrader is, is correct in her, her assessment that this is what is needed and what is moving to in many ways. The Deputy Chief Monjorno does give me pause. It is a seven minute time to, to response time. But at the same time, I know we've done some other things in other areas where the, the times are stretched a little bit, knowing that we will have to build a fire station in North Meridian. We will have to build a fire station in South Meridian. And now those are happening. We do have to build a fire station here in this western, if you want to say, you know, just call it Western Meridian. That, that will serve, serve that area and that work is beginning. We are searching for, for land and marks out there. So we'll put a bug in marks here. So to me, I think with the, the changes that Councilwoman Schrader has, has doggedly pursued and made sure we have, have in, in this DA, I think Caleb makes some very good points about the property that where the R15, some of those changes need to be made. And I, I think if we can do it, a question for, for Mr. Mary, Mr. Neri after my comment, and that is, you know, if, if we just want to have the DA coming back to us for final review, can we, do we need to vote on annex, annexation tonight and then do that? Or if we reschedule, if we have another hearing, even if it's next week, does it have to be renoticed?
Mr. Member of the council, again, I would say I want Caleb to weigh in. I think if you want draft findings and a draft development agreement, I would think your earliest time to be able to see that would be the September 6th, but I think might already be a little full. I would suggest if that's what your intent is, you continue it so that you have an opportunity to comment, not necessarily for public comment, but for you to make sure the findings, the DA, the planning is comfortable with what it is, all of you are comfortable. I did hear a little bit of concern about wanting to really see the language. So you're not really necessarily going to vote on, on approving it tonight. You're going to vote, you're going to direct the staff to prepare findings with the desire to approve this project with the cases that have been discussed, with the specific notes and such that are come tonight, like for example, the additional information that Ms. Nelson provided about providing access to that small out parcel that's adjacent to Franklin Road, that that would be included. I, I think that would, that's what I would envision. And I don't know if Caleb has a different thought on that since planning is one that has to craft this, but I think, I don't, I think one week is a little tight because really the deadline for one week is tomorrow morning. So really, and so you don't have a meeting in two weeks. So it really would be nine, six, but I think Mr. Johnson had told me earlier that we also have a pretty full night. But I think at that one, we're really reviewing the findings of the DA. I don't think we're talking about a lengthy hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah. I mean, wouldn't we normally be, help me out because I want to understand how this is different. Like for, for most projects, wouldn't we normally be approving it in general, subject to reviewing the findings? Cause then we put those on a consent agenda. I guess I'm just wondering why, if it's really important that we not vote on it tonight or we, or if we can vote on, we desire to approve the project and directing staff to prepare these findings and the DA with these conditions that we can list them if we, if I have them, if we need. I'm just trying to understand how it's different. That's all.
I, I guess Mr. Member of the council, Councilwoman Schrader, I think the only thing that's different is I wasn't, I wasn't sure without any specific language other than what's been crafted by the applicant and what's been commented on in a memo that all of you were comfortable, or at least four of you are comfortable enough to send, approve the project subject to just the findings, bringing them back on a future consent agenda, which might be on the 6th or might be the 13th, depending on if there's language that needs to be wordsmithed out a little bit more. But if, if that's a desire, you certainly can approve it. I guess I, what I was hearing from a couple of you was, I'm not ready yet. I want to see the language. I want to, I want to know what the specific wording is, not the converse, not just based on the conversation, but actually read it. So it really is your, your decision. If you're comfortable enough to make a decision based on what you have, and that's the direction you want to give us and we'll craft the findings subject to the agreement between both parties, that's certainly within your authority. So it's up to you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
I had raised that sort of sideways process only because the manner in which we got here is a little sideways and it didn't originate with language crafted by our staff. And if this project, you know, has the head nods and direction to go forward from council, which I don't, we've got to hear from three more. So we'll hear from three more and see if this thing goes that route. But if, if it did have that approval, even the general head nod and direction, I think that's what the applicant is comfortable with. And if it takes two weeks to craft the language and bring it all back, or three, that's not the concern. I think the concern from the applicant's perspective of get the direction that we're all on board with this and let's just make it right. I, a matter of a week at this last stage to ensure the language is right. We, we talked about it. I don't have a, a record of it. I didn't take notes specific enough to make sure something's not missed. That was the only reason to not be in a rush if there's direction, but we'll see what the other council members say.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Caver.
Thanks, Councilmember Board. I think you're kind of tracking right where I'm at. And, you know, my biggest concerns about this project have always been, I think is with most of councils, been the roadway network and making sure that both existing residents, future residents, as well as the users are going to be able to access these roads efficiently. I, I want to commend the applicant for, for their work and their effort to make that happen. I was meeting with some folks a couple of weeks ago and they were going on that the city council sometimes continues too many of these meetings. And the result of though really speaks for themselves. It's a better project for our community. It's a better project for the applicant. It's a win across the board. I, I'm supportive conceptually of what we've been discussing tonight. I though would like to see the, the findings come back from staff. I think it also gives the applicant an opportunity to review and make sure what they thought was going to be covered was covered, what we as council think was going to be covered before we make a decision here in, in two or three weeks. And then, Mr. Mayor, if, if I can real quick, you know, we're a team and we don't, we don't pass out game balls. And I know that we may not take some action, but if we did have a game ball, boy, I sure think it goes to Councilmember Schrader tonight. I just wanted to thank you. Being, maybe this is a good decision for council to put me in a, in another state. And so I'm relatively quiet through the meetings, but I just wanted to thank Councilmember Schrader for her very thorough review and questions and, and the applicant and staff for working through that all.
Council, any other comments from anybody? Just for, you know, I, I've met with the applicant, like many of you before they did, and I've never been a proponent of this project. I'm still not. I know it doesn't matter. I knew the votes were here last time. I knew they were going to be here this time. But I, I do think that we are stretching our services and our growth area for this community further than where we are. We're essentially asking ACHD to now re divert their funding to other roadways in this area when we have other road areas of our community that we've somewhat identified as a priority, potentially along Eustick, get out to a high school out there. I'm just concerned about extending our services, fire, roads into this area. The job information is much better. I mean, I'm, I'm pleased to hear about the, the job numbers. I'm excited to hear who it is. Expect to see that press release as soon as this is announced about who's, who's staying in our community or who's staying in the valley and coming to this location. But, you know, in my opinion, on behalf of the city staff who voted, who recommended denial, your emergency services who have concerns and quite frankly, a road network, I was hoping the applicant was going to come back and build all the roads. And the ACHD wasn't going to be the one that was going to be funding it. Cause I do think that this, if, if they want these timeframes to be upheld, it is going to impact other roadway priorities in our community. But I think that most people would say is a need right now, whether it's Black Cat, Eustick, McMillan, Linda Road, Overpass. These projects are going to compete with those dollars for those projects. But as I said, I've heard, I've heard your comments. I could have just stayed quiet, but I felt it was important for me to put that information from my standpoint out there that I think is going to be a challenge for our community to continue to. Really you're opening up a new sector of our community that we've been trying to hold back a little bit. And it's going to be harder for the next one to come in to continue to hold that line, which we, we have that request all the way up and down Black Cat to the west. You've kind of jumping over a little bit, not far, but it, it's, it's enough to make the conversation different as we move forward up in this area of our community. So, but it has been a process and I appreciate the work that everyone did and, and go from there. So thank you for allowing me to say a few words.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
With that discussion, the public hearing is still open and the consensus chatter has been some direction to staff that were on board with the project. We talked about perhaps three weeks, but if the applicant wants to, I don't want to make you head nod, but if you want to come up and if you think that's an awful idea, that's a great idea, or there's some issue that we haven't contemplated. Maybe there is, you bet.
Thank you for your patience. We, we're just looking to get to the finish line as, as quickly as possible. So we would ask them, there has, as Caleb noted, been a lot of back and forth. And so, and I think the notes were pretty clear. I think several of us were taking pretty good notes about what the, the discussion was tonight. So we'd ask for a condensed timeframe. This is not to go draft all the conditions. So as, as short as possible. You know, also we, you know, we lean towards the approach that, that Schrader outlined, Councilmember Schrader, to have the, the vote as you normally proceed and come back with the findings to have that. to have the, the vote as you normally proceed and come back with the findings, to have that presented then. That would get us even closer to the finish line to handle that at findings. But at a minimum, we'd just ask for the shortest timeframe possible. Thank you for letting us weigh in on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I'm willing to give it a try. We can see, and if I miss stuff, you interject, help me out. Yeah, I think, yeah, thanks, Councilman Cavanagh, that was very sweet. Yeah, can I, can I question though, can I make a motion without, can I leave the public hearing open? Or do I have to close it?
You must close the public hearing.
And we'd have to reopen it if we go back. All right, well, I move that we close a public hearing.
Motion second to close the public hearing, all in favor, seeing if I by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. You guys have it, the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
After considering all staff, applicant, public testimony, move to approve file number H2021-0064 as presented in today's hearing date with the following modifications. We direct staff to draft appropriate DA provisions and findings for final approval as per normal course of business. Going off of the August 16th memo, but with any additional changes that are needed to be made by staff and with the following modifications. Under condition 1, 1.1A, we will remove the word primary in reference to self-storage facility, reflecting that self-storage will not be a permitted use on the property. In addition, we will note that vehicle impound sales and repair will not be a primary use on the property. And that any use of vehicle impound sales and repair would be conditioned upon keeping the inventory of vehicles inside of the building. Under condition 1, 1.1B, we would note after applications comma, including our architectural design review process. Under condition 1, 1.1C1, we will add that building facades fronting on an adjacent to Black Cat Road, Interstate I84 and north-facing facades facing Franklin Road will all be considered frontage for the purpose of applying the development guidelines. Further down, under condition 1, 1.12G, just to reflect the discussion, we will allow the Ross and Laugh train to be left open. Under condition H2, the East-West collector must be extended to the western boundary. We will add the language to reflect that it can, that it must be done within 90 days from the end of the available connecting street on the western boundary. To clarify, meaning that the extension of the East-West collector must be accelerated to be faster than the applicant building to 960,000 square feet. If the stub street has been completed on the western boundary, it must be completed within 90 days of that taking place. I'll leave it into staff's discretion whether to specify the ramifications of not doing that in time would include building permits being withheld in the future and whether they want to include bonding as a condition. Under 1.2A, I want to add a provision that building anything in the R15-zoned property beyond the existing use would require a DA modification and a conceptual development plan. Okay, and then finally, a couple more new provisions need to be added specifying that the three-acre parcel needs access to the arterial and that the applicant needs to work with the fire department to take any measures necessary under our normal course of business to mitigate the risk of a fire or an EMS event at the facility. And noting that the building material must be primarily made of concrete, as the applicant has stated, and have sprinklers. I think I got it. I'm looking around.
Mr. Mayor. Do I have a second for discussion?
Yes, I'll second.
I have a second, Councilman Holton.
I just, on the access for, for the, the home at 350 to the collector, not, not, not the arterial, because Black Cat would be the arterial, so it's collector, correct?
Thank you, Councilman Holton. Yes, that's correct. I will make that change to my motion.
Second agree.
Second agree.
Discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Kudos to Councilwoman Strater. That was pretty darn accurate. I, so I just want to be clear in all of my questions this evening. I, I don't, I'm not opposed to this project and its purpose and its use. I'm happy to have members of our community that want to bring something like this forward. But I still have too many questions to feel comfortable voting yes on the annexation. So I won't be supporting it, but I, I don't want there to be a misunderstanding that I'm not supporting any application at all. It's just I don't, I'm not supportive of this particular motion at this time for the annexation. So I wanted to state that before we vote, that, that I just have too many questions that I need answered before I can say yes on the annexation.
There further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bourne.
You might have, it might have been mentioned, but the, the motion includes this, the catch-all, you know, any and all other remarks from the applicant and staff that were discussed, but might not have been specifically addressed in the motion itself.
Mr. Mayor, absolutely. If I did not, I thought I stated that, but if I did not, I absolutely intended to.
Second agrees, second agrees.
Mr. Mayor. Mr.? I, I, I agree. I think the motion was tracked with my notes very well, and I'm not trying to belabor this, but I do want to bring up one concept that's a little bit different than what we've talked about tonight. Like the old adage, I think a picture is worth a thousand words. And I would like your general blessing, and I don't think we have to open up the, the public hearing again, but if they have some concerns with this, that's fine. But I think on a couple of these items, like for example, on B, Councilman Strater, your motion mentioned to include the DES process, I think if we can just attach to the development agreement, the submitted renderings and things like that, that will help. So just as an example, and if you say, don't do that, I'm, I'm open to that, too. But I, I would like to include the roadway phasing exhibit that we saw tonight in the development agreement. And I think that will really help H on page two, because there's a lot of square footage things, but to have the picture to go with the words, I think will help. And there may need, be need be some slight tweaks that match the words based on what was said with the 90 days and all that. But I think it'll be clear then for future, when someone reads this, well, what are you talking about? And same with, you know, the concept plan. So putting the concept plan in there, so it's, it's referenced, but it's not referenced as an exhibit. So I just wanted to generally get head nods. I saw some over here, but I think there'll be some wordsmithing, and I don't want to take too many liberties in that. I appreciate that at the beginning of the motion, you added that, but I just wanted to make sure that's not a, a big deal for anybody. It doesn't seem like it is. The other thing I wanted to just give you a heads up then, that I'll likely include, as I talked to the applicant about modifying the exhibit that shows the phasing for the roadway exhibits. Again, I'm not trying to belabor this too much, but we do run into issues sometimes with the building official and occupancy. I'm not worried about the first one. That makes sense. Prior to first occupancy, we, we have a hammer there. Sometimes, though, the developers out of the picture, when you get down the line to phases two, three, and four, and you made reference to withholding building permits potentially, I'm much more comfortable with withholding building permits than occupancy. Because sometimes you get a developer and they sell a lot to somebody who's building the building, and we hold up the building occupancy for something the developer's on the hook to do. So building occupancy isn't always the best hammer, because we hold someone's feet to the fire that wasn't initially on the hook to perform. So just, I'll talk with legal a little bit about that, but we've had issue after issue with withholding occupancy. And if we can make that more, we'll withhold building permits. We're not so far down the line and someone's just chomping at the bit to get in their building, and yet we say, well, you're missing a tree over here. Well, it's not my responsibility. That was the developer that's supposed to put the tree in. So again, I'm, just don't be surprised, and we may need to talk about that and pull it off the consent agenda potentially. If the applicant doesn't agree to some of that, and we'll talk about it, but.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah.
I believe my motion specified building permits. But I'm happy to clarify that that could be, I actually gave planning some pretty wide berth to add whatever conditions are necessary and encourage them to do that.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I, Mr. Mayor, as the council comes through, I heard building permits as well. So I, I, I think we're okay, but I, I think what Caleb is right is that, you know, we want to make sure we're real specific. So we'll, we'll have that conversation with the applicant. The only other thing I was going to suggest, and this is mostly, again, I think, kind of the warning that Caleb has had, that we're not talking about the current planning staff today, we're talking about a future planner five years from now. I know Ms. Nelson said that, you know, again, part of their construction is these buildings are predominantly concrete. I don't want someone to have to figure out how much is predominantly concrete. I looked at the renderings and I think that's what, what we normally do is attach renderings. I would imagine these buildings appear to be in the pictures to be concrete, glass, and steel. So I would assume that's the general material that these buildings are made out of, that are consistent with the drawing. So I would suggest instead of just identifying concrete, it's a concrete, glass, and steel, and then consistent with the, with the renderings that are submitted. So then a planner doesn't have to go figure out, is this have too much concrete, not enough steel, too much steel, not enough concrete? I don't think we're going to care. I think they're going to say, what does it look like?
Councilman Schrader.
Great suggestion. So moved.
Second agrees.
In addition,
Second agrees.
I would like to also add to my motion that planning staff may add as an exhibit, any renderings, roadway phasing exhibits, concept plans, any slide of any presentation or attachment on the public record that will further clarify the findings and DA provisions.
Second agrees. Second agrees. Is there further discussion on the motion? And call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Aye.
Burnt. Perro.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Horton. Holton.
Aye. Five eyes, one nose, and the motion is agreed to. Thank you all for your time, energy, and diligence on this item. And, and with that, we already did item five, so are there any future meeting topics, or do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn our meeting.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, seeing if I by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned.